I'm here.
Councilmember Barry. Councilmember Clay.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson. Councilmember Siemens.
President.
Councilmember Snipper.
President.
Councilmember Wright.
Are there any council comments? Councilmember Clay.
This weekend, I let my 10-year-old and 9-year-old go to Jackson Boyd Park by themselves, which is very exciting because Jackson Boyd Park, it's not entirely finished, there's a, you know, there's a couple of pieces of orange tape, but they had a great time. And when the park was torn up, they weren't quite old enough yet to walk by themselves. So it's kind of too exciting for me. One is that the park is about done, which I'm very excited about, and one is that I can send my kids there. The great part about the park that the kids, I think, that my kids who are 6, 9, and 10 like the best, is the, this new web thing that they have, which is kind of like the old jungle gym, so it has this outer structure, but then inside, there's all these webs tied together. And if you look at it, you see that the lower ends of the web are closer together, so they're good for little kids, and as you climb farther up, the webs get farther apart, and the little kids can't climb that high. And so it's kind of a big kid domain. So, big thanks to everybody who worked on that. I really appreciate that. And the other comment that I have is that, WC had to rain on the parade a little bit because they had to dig a big hole in the middle of Ethan Allen, because they didn't have enough holes dug in the rest of the city. So they put one right on Ethan Allen at Jackson, which caused all of the traffic to Ethan Allen to unexpectedly be routed down Jackson Avenue, and then along Boyd, and maybe down to Lincoln, although I think most of them turned at Boyd to get back and around. And, you know, it created, it created a dangerous situation, and even the ride-on bus drivers and the metro bus drivers, you know, did just sort of roll through the intersection and around the corner, which is a real bummer. And I thought that, it occurred to me that, because this happened before when the water main broke on New Hampshire Avenue, that on the weekends, WSSC doesn't have any plan for traffic management when they do something that requires, you know, a significant rerouting of traffic, and so they, they leave people to just find their own way. And the couple of times when that has been Ethan Allen, and they had to find their own way through the neighborhoods in one direction or the other, it has been dangerous and messy. And so, maybe we could work with them so that either they have folks who come out and do the traffic management, or we have some kind of a response program in the city so that if they have to tear up a arterial street in the city, that they could call the police department, we could dispatch a team, and then we can bill them for it. Those are my comments.
Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. Last night, my wife and I had the pleasure of going to Columbia Union College to hear State Comptroller Peter Franchot talk about the question of slots that's on the ballot this year. It requires a state constitutional amendment to allow slot machines, and Mr. Franchot was very clear in his presentation of the many perils that slot machines present for the community. It was really disappointing to hear how much money the state will be sending and is guaranteeing to the slot machine executives, over $550 million to bring slots to Maryland. I think it's important for the community to reject this idea. It is, it is a detriment to society to have slot machines. They, Mr. Franchot was giving statistics that I don't recall off the top of my head, of the estimates of the number of addicts that will occur during the first year of gambling addicts that will require public assistance because of this, and the many other expenses that are going to be incurred by us, the public, should slot machines be legalized in Maryland. And so I encourage people to learn more about the question, the request for a constitutional amendment, and to vote no to question number two on the ballot on election day. Thank you.
Other comments? Councilmember Wright.
First, just wanted to talk about the police spying scandal. As many of us know, that's come forth, that a number of people from Tacoma Park were actually investigated by the state police and spied upon. These were people who are peace activists and anti-death penalty individuals, and sort of surprising that it was thought that they were terrorist groups. But I wanted to bring that up because next week, I plan to introduce a resolution, which I hope my council colleagues will support, which asks the governor and legislature to do two things. One is to release the documents that were accumulated on those people to the individuals. I think right now, the governor has said that he's going to, that those documents would be destroyed. I think it would be fair that the individuals know what was, what sort of spying was done on them. And the second is to ask the legislature to support legislation that just Delegate District 20, State Senator Jamie Raskin, and Delegate Sheila Hickson are going to introduce into the legislature. I'm trying to get a copy of that proposed legislation so my fellow council colleagues can see it, although I'm quite confident that Jamie will propose something that is fair and reasonable and protects people's rights in the future. The second item, I just had a question on the speed cameras. I know we signed the contract on September 22nd. I think within 120 days, they're supposed to install them, but I was wondering if we have any estimate on when they'd actually be installed?
Yes, I just signed the contract last week, and the chief can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's about, I think, 120 days roughly from the time the contract was executed before the cameras will likely be put in. I think that's actually the deadline, that they had to do it within 120 days.
Yeah, that was the deadline, but I was wondering if we had an estimate on when they'd actually be in?
Well, I just signed it last week, so it could be anywhere from up till probably late January.
They picked it up, they haven't signed it back.
Back.
Okay.
So it'll be up to the latter part of January.
Okay. And then the second thing, I want to get an update on where we were in terms of the council chambers issuing the RFP.
The RFP was issued on October 20th. Sorry, Councilmember Wright, I'm drawing a blank. I think they had about three weeks to respond. Our intention is to have brought the bids before the council sometime during the month of November, so that we can actually get an architectural firm on board before the council goes on recess.
And then, interestingly, a bunch of us were Adventist Community Services before we came here, and I found two things interesting, and I think maybe the city should think about investigating. One was that they're offering computer classes and trying to offer more classes, and I thought it might be interesting if we talked to them about a partnership potentially where they could use the computers and the space we have here to do, and they could, they could put forth the teachers and the training. It would be able to offer the classes in a central location within the city, and so that was one thing that struck me. And the second was their interesting use of work-study students, and whether the city could either do that directly or partner with another nonprofit to somehow use the talents of work-study students in various departments like planning or recreation, where they would get some real-world experienced skills, and the city would get some low-cost professional help. And then last, I just want to touch on an issue I've asked about a number of times, which has to do with the guardrails along Philadelphia near Piney Branch. Again, if you're on the south side of Philadelphia, the guardrails are, many of them are rusted and have holes in them, so I suspect they're probably weakened, and if a car were to hit them, they might go through it. And on the other side, the guard, the north side, the guardrails, instead of being between the street and the sidewalk, they're between the sidewalk and the fence of the houses along there. So it's great that they're protecting the fence, but they're not protecting pedestrians that are walking along the northern side of Philadelphia. And I know we have a request in the S.H.A., we've talked to them, I just wanted to...
Yeah, both those issues have previously been reported, but I'll ask the Public Works Director if she could follow up with them tomorrow and see if we can find out the status.
Thank you.
Other comments? Councilmember Robinson.
I'll keep it short since I came here a little late. Four minutes, boy, were we on time tonight. Good, glad to see you back like that. I had a great time at the Legislative MML Conference in Cambridge last weekend, and learned a lot. Appreciate the opportunity to go there. I have a quick comment on the computer use point that you made, Josh, Councilmember Wright, and that is that if we consider that, is consider using our computers or any of our resources for another entity to take advantage of, to enter into a partnership, that we ought to be clear that that, the use of those, of any of our assets, we ought to have a policy for that use, and make it clear that anybody, including the Adventist or any other entity, could use computers or others of our assets or resources in a, in a clear way. So I'd look to see a policy for how to make those assets shared, and then go about sharing them, rather than enter into a contract or an agreement without having a policy in place first. Finally, I wanted to acknowledge something that was brought up on the, on a list server too, about how we have our comments before the public comments, and I just wanted to put out there that it might be good for us to hear from the public, maybe not always first, but maybe a sandwich, so that we have short comments, we hear what the public has to say, and we have an opportunity to respond to those public comments. Although I do acknowledge that we always have the opportunity to, to respond immediately, but I'm just, I'm curious about whether the structure of our comments, then the public comments, then the city manager, and then off we go and run, whether that's what the tradition of that is, and how, what the thinking of is behind it.
Other comments? I'll just also mention that the Maryland Municipal League Legislative Conference was very helpful on a number of factors, and one of the primary focus of that conference is to approve the legislative priorities for the league for the year, and one of the big ones is to work on revenue issues for municipalities and expanding options for municipalities in the types of revenues that we can access. And that's going to, that's a longstanding issue with the league, and it's also one that will probably be longstanding for a while longer, given the difficulty in convincing state legislature that we need more options. But at least the league is focused on that again this year. I also wanted to mention that I spoke at the groundbreaking for the Tacoma Park new fire station on last Thursday, so that process is moving forward. I believe they're on schedule, and they will be moving from the existing building into the temporary building probably a week from today, and so that will cause a little reconfiguration of the intersection at the junction, and it may take people a little bit, a little while to get used to that, and that will probably remain that way somewhere around 18 months. So fire trucks will be coming out of a different location, not at the light at Philadelphia as they have for 81 years. And I also wanted to mention that I attended a National Capital Region Emergency Preparedness Council Senior Leaders Seminar on Pandemic Flu last week, which was also very interesting. Learned a lot about the difficulties that a region such as ours, and in fact, the country might have in dealing with pandemic flu, and the fact that that kind of thing can take up to two years to kind of move its way through and dissipate. And there are a number of issues that came up that individuals, businesses, and governments can potentially think about in planning for such an event, and I know that the, what's it called tonight? The Emergency Preparedness Committee is going to be giving a report, so I'd be happy to share some information from that seminar with the committee. And I just had one question. If the city manager has any further information on the county releasing the Joint Task Force Report? And the, the last deadline that we thought we heard was last week?
I believe it was last Tuesday, to be honest. I've sort of lost count. As I mentioned to the council...
It's easy to lose count when they keep promising it.
Yeah, as I mentioned to the council in an email last week, I had spoken to the co-chair on behalf of the municipalities, and had suggested that the chapter president basically send a letter to the county executive expressing our concern. I saw him at the conference. I don't believe the letter's gone out yet, but I think it was his intention to get that arranged for this week.
Okay, good. Thank you. If there are no other comments. We don't have any additional agenda items. As far as coming agendas, I'll just point out again that Councilmember Leventhal is due here next week for a presentation and briefing. Next week, we'll also have an update on the Purple Line. The following week, November 10th, we'll have an update from Safe Tacoma, and a report from the Health Services Impact Committee and their findings. The following week, the 17th, we'll have a, we're tentatively scheduled to have a discussion of our affordable housing policy, and a discussion on the sign regulations on public property. And then finally, on the 24th, one of the things that we'll have is a presentation from the auditors for the FY08 Annual Financial Report. And then after that, we are on break for the month of December and come back in January. It's now time to adopt the minutes for September 8th. Would anybody like to move their approval?
Moved.
Moved by Councilmember Wright, seconded by Councilmember Snipper. Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yes, have it. We now move to public comment period, and if anybody has any comments to make, please identify yourself and keep your comments to three minutes. We'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mr. Pat Lovelace, 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park, Maryland. There's a couple of things I'd like to bring up this time. One is Halloween is coming up, and I want to see everybody make sure that their children are safe this year. You know, we don't want to have any unspeakable tragedies that we cannot reverse. We'd like to, I'd like to see adults with their children at all times if they go trick-or-treating. And if, I'd like to see the city have some events for the children if they don't go trick-or-treating, because it can all take a moment for a child to be snatched in a tragedy that can last many lifetimes. So please, keep your children safe. The second thing I want to bring up is the voting. Everybody, I want to see out there to vote. I'm going to be down at the middle school, the Piney Branch Middle School this time, with the peace sign out there again, trying to get people to vote with their conscience. As far as slot machines, no, we do not need them. I have personally seen people going across the street and spending their entire disability checks on the lottery. That is bad enough. We don't need the damn slot machines. You know, fools of the devil. We don't need them. We are, because I have personally known people who have gone over there and begged money afterwards, saying, "I can't pay my rent. Can you give me $20? I need some cigarettes. I spent all my money across the street on the numbers, and I bought the lottery tickets, and I didn't win anything." I've personally seen them out there, felling out tens and $20 bills like this, you know, like it's come, going out of style, and then they got, and they got no checks left for their foods or anything, or their rent, or their medicines. So please, vote with a conscience. Vote like you care for your neighbor. We do not need slot machines in this country, in this, in this country or this state or this town. They are weapons. They are weapons of mass destruction. They're going to take a lot away from the poor and the handicapped, I am handicapped as is. And I hate to hear or see or feel other people going across the street, spend their money on, on the lottery, and then they can't afford their medications, and then we wonder why we have insanity and crime and drinking on the streets because they can't afford their medicines. The crime rate goes up. They're going to be out in the corners, begging in the street corners for money that they have already spent on the lottery. So please, slot machines are going to be a million times more. I mean, it's, you know, it's like if you want to stop an infection, do you go out and put dirt in it? No. That's what the slot machines are going to be doing. It's like pouring drain oil in an open cut. It's going to make a bad situation far worse than you can ever imagine. So please, everybody who's going out to vote, vote for peace, vote with a conscience. No slot machines in Maryland, please. And remember, Tacoma Park, stand up and do what's right. Come out, see us out there when we go out there and vote. I'll be out there. Come on, join me. Vote! And also, Joyce Siemens, Terry's wife, is going to be having her birthday on that very day, on Election Day. What a great way to celebrate her birthday, by getting all of Tacoma Park out here to vote for Terry Siemens' wife. Joyce Siemens is going to have her birthday, so please, come on out and celebrate her birthday by, by voting. Happy birthday, Joyce.
Thank you. I sense a radiant campaign brewing.
Good evening. Seth Grahn, 7300 Willow Avenue. Two quick things. One, you're going to be discussing the New Hampshire Avenue Concept Plan. I had a chance to read that. I think it's a very strong document, and the only comment I would make is noticing about a week ago, a two-part series in the Washington Post, the first of which was on the front page about Rockville Pike, and a very similar on the face of it, concept plan. It'd be great to see what the city proposes in cooperation with Prince George's and Montgomery Counties on the front page of the Post, that kind of attention. That's a very difficult thing to do, as will be the funding for implementing the master plan, so I urge you to keep that in mind during your discussions, how you're actually going to make this a reality. Secondly, I've also read the council's draft Strategic Plan for the City. It is also a very strong document. I forwarded some comments to my own council rep, and I'll look forward to forwarding some more, and it's a definitely step in the right direction. So one of the elements in that Strategic Plan for the City is, of course, environmentalism, and that's the main thing I'm here to talk about tonight, since I wasn't able to be present two weeks ago, when Steve Davies presented the letter signed by 31 Tacoma Park environmentalists regarding a council work session to talk about a ban on gasoline-powered leaf blowers. Mayor Williams, I'm glad that you will be scheduling a session for January. The letter signers hope that, at that point, we'll actually have all of you council members, including you, Mayor Williams, over on our side in favor of a ban, that you'll see the reasons for this, and weigh them against the reasons for taking other approaches, and you'll come over on our side. We definitely want the cities to be, the city to be partner with us in this initiative, and we'll try to convince you that you should be. The context for the work session request for the ban, of course, concerned noise, pollution, and fuel inefficiency of gasoline-powered leaf blowers. I do want to say that I did not have any particular individual in mind when I joined with Steve Davies in this effort. I've since learned that about a number of Tacoma Park individuals who use these devices, and I'll remark that any environmental initiative is going to touch all of us in some way or another, any serious one, that is. Environmentalism is a citywide concern, and the reason we took the approach that we did of putting together a letter as well, yeah, sure, it's recognized in the city charter as a way to get things on the council agenda, but also, Steve Davies and I wanted to ascertain that the support level for this initiative was deep, and we did ascertain that. We got 31 environmentalist signers, I'm not including myself there. We had only three people who turned us down. One of them works for Montgomery County, actually, and said that he uses a gasoline-powered weed whacker and lawnmower, and he would feel hypocritical. The other two who turned us down were Catherine Tunis, the head of the Environment Committee, who's done more to support environmentalism in Tacoma Park than anyone else. Catherine said her reluctance was only that she works with the city council, and she didn't feel it would be proper for her to sign, but she does support this initiative. The other one who turned us down was David Houck, who's the head of the Montgomery County chapter of the Sierra Club, whose reluctance was based only on the Sierra Club's having an initiative to do something comprehensive with environmentalism with the county next year, and he thought that signing onto our letter might be a conflict there. I do want to clarify a couple of points, and I'm sorry about going over, I realize I'm already there. First, when I was a kid, lots of folks burned their leaves. But we don't do that anymore. Now we have Tacoma Park City Code 1016110B. No trash or rubbish of any description, including leaves, paper, or like material, should be burned in the open yard of any premises. We have banned leaf burning. Well, burning leaves isn't environmentally sound, it creates a nuisance. It also creates a fire hazard for houses, but then again, unlike leaf blowers, it doesn't create a noise hazard. So, you know, nowadays, very people, very few suburban communities allow it. We can, on the precedent of, if only what we've done with burning leaves, take action to ban leaf blowers. We can do it, we've done it in the past. Local governments ban those things, even though it costs people the effort of transporting leaves to the curb, it costs something in terms of the city collection and all that kind of stuff, so we recognize that. The gasoline-powered leaf blowers are a public nuisance, and they pollute, so that's the basis of all this. I want to address why ban, why address only the leaf blowers, why not other gasoline-powered lawn care tools and a spectrum of other environmental concerns? Steve Davies and I discussed this when we were formulating the letter. Why not go after those weed whackers, hedge trimmers, edgers, even lawnmowers? Well, we want to avoid overreaching specifically. The comparison I made was to Hillary Clinton and the Clinton Administration Healthcare Plan in the 93 era. You know, you overreach and you get nowhere. So we want to focus on this one issue. That said, that I would, you know, support loads of other environmental initiatives. For instance, myself, I'd love to see a city environmental ordinance that would make city, that would mandate that environmentalism and energy consumption be a primary policy consideration in all city actions. That's partly a reaction to what happened with the community center construction, but there are other places that applies. So, you know, there's lots one can do in environmentalism. To me, this shouldn't distract from trying to actually get something done on one issue that we can get something done on. And the context there, of course, is the, for the council, the 2000 adoption of a recommendation to try to roll back Tacoma Park greenhouse gas emissions to 80% of 1990 levels by 2010, which is only two years from now. So this initiative will contribute to that. Again, we want to be partners with you in trying to reach the goals that the city council of that era, well, there's only one member of the present council who was on there then, but in any case, the council now inherited what the 2000 council did. We want to be partners with you in achieving this. Now, part of the reason for not overreaching is that there's no single solution to every problem. Take lawnmowers, for instance. The Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments had a discussion with something called the Clean Air Partners back in 2005 about lawnmowers. Well, lawnmowers, the estimate that was put forward, produce per hour 40%, I'm sorry, 40 times the emissions of a late-model car. Well, the proper approach there could be a trade-in program, and we are trying to pursue that. We'd like to do that in partnership with the city of Tacoma Park, where people can trade in their gasoline-powered lawnmowers for a substantial credit toward the purchase of an electric or a push mower. So we'd love to work with you as partners on that. It would be a natural, it does require some fundraising. I would not look to the city for that funding, but there are funding sources for this kind of thing. Lastly, a word about the language. We talked in the letter specifically, a city action to phase out the use of gasoline-powered leaf blowers in Tacoma Park. Phase out. We're very sensitive to the concerns of all the stakeholders, whether they be residents, businesses, landscapers, institutions, including the city. I had a discussion with Mike Welsh, the city gardener, about this. Also involved was Susan Harris from the garden, well, who's a well-known gardener around here. You know, Mike opposes this. He says, you know, "How am I going to clean up the city gardens?" and all of that kind of stuff. We recognize all of these concerns. We're talking about a phased implementation of a ban. But a ban is... But a ban is what we're looking for. So I would like to ask you to respect that you have just about every leading environmentalist in Tacoma Park that I could identify, and Steve could identify, supporting this. Every single one. The only people who declined to sign, and this wasn't artificial, the only people who declined to sign did it because of, in two cases, competing concerns, and in one case, because he felt he might be hypocritical. I want you to recognize the depth of the support for this, and I wanna report to you, and so does Steve, and everyone else who signed, as partners in going forward. So we'll put together material going into the January work session that we hope will make a compelling case that will convince you and everyone else in Tacoma Park about the necessity of moving forward with this initiative. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else? The city managers' comments?
Yes, thank you. Just a few quick items, 'cause I know we're running behind. Actuaries at the dais this evening is a copy of the actuarial valuation as of June 30th, 2008, for the city's police employees' retirement plan. This was discussed by the trustees of the plan last Thursday, and certainly the council can read it to whatever degree you want to at your leisure. The one thing I did wanna point out, which was not unexpected, is that the actuarial report indicates that the required contribution rate, or the recommended contribution rate to the plan, will go up as fiscal 2010, as you may recall from my transmittal letter for this year's budget. The plan has experienced a much higher rate of disability than had been originally envisioned when the plan was set up. And the increase in the recommended contribution rate is reflective of that. For the council's benefit, the recommended contribution rate for this year is twenty-nine point one-three percent. As indicated in the executive summary of the actuarial report, they are now suggesting thirty-four point seven percent. So I just wanted to bring that to the council's attention. The other thing I distributed relative to the police pension plan, it's a one-page sheet entitled Asset Reconciliation. This was something that the financial advisors for the plan distributed to the board. Obviously, this actuarial report was based on June 30th of 2008, and the markets, obviously, have taken a considerable dive in recent weeks. So what they were showing in this one-page handout was the market value of the plan as of June 30th, less any withdrawals, any contributions, as well as investment earnings or losses. And they essentially gave a new market value of the plan as of October 21st. What you'll note on the left-hand side is that the assets had a value of four point five million dollars as of June 30th. There was a very large withdrawal, which was related to the death of a participant in the plan since that date. But essentially, the plan has suffered investment losses of approximately seven hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars from June 30th to October 21st, leaving an ending value of three point two five million. So I think just given the magnitude of the investment losses, this was something that I just wanted to share with the council. As a reminder, in agreement with Local 400, the bargaining unit for many of our police officers, we are investigating other pension plan options, and those discussions have already begun with the union. So we'll certainly keep the council apprised as those discussions move forward.
Barb, can I ask a couple of questions about this as we go? I see that the total market value of the assets that are where the funds lie.
Correct.
Is that, do I have that right?
Mm-hmm.
It's the value of the assets where the funds lie. And those funds are the funds in the pot to pay pensions for our police department. Am I still on track here?
Mm-hmm, yes.
And that has dropped a chunk, a good chunk, something like twenty percent.
In that ballpark, yes.
In that ballpark.
Mm-hmm.
And on the statement number twenty-five in the book, with the Schedule of Funding Process, that, I'm just kinda reviewing what you've said here. If I've got the right one, on page fourteen, is that correct?
Yes.
The liability that was our liability, based on actuarial tables, for the pensions, as a reflection of our police department and its, and its use of disability, is in the third column. Do I have that right? The actuarial accrued liability?
It's just not, it's, this may be a discussion we wanna have offline. It's really not that simple. What Councilmember Robinson is referring to is Statement Number 125, which is a requirement of the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, which basically, the main purpose of this is really to show the level of funded versus unfunded liabilities related to pension plans. So it's not just related to disability, but it's any projected payout of benefits for participants.
Okay, so, okay, so it's, but this is just for the police department.
Right.
So it's their retirement plan, the liability for the retirement plan has been going up five point seven million, five point nine, then there was seven point two, eight point three, eight point nine, nine point six, ten point seven. And then last year, it went from ten seven to thirteen point four million. So there was a, something like a twenty-five percent increase in the liability.
Yeah, what I would probably suggest the column, if I were a council member, that I would probably be most interested in, would be the one that says funded ratio A to B, which is essentially the portion of the plan which is considered funded from an actuarial standpoint. This was a plan that was obviously set up a very short period of time ago, relatively speaking, with the goal of having it fully funded in twenty years.
Well, our liability jumped up twenty-seven percent last year, and the four point five million on the A column has dropped down to three point two. So that funded ratio of A to B.
It dropped from just about forty percent to about thirty-four percent.
But that thirty-four percent, based on today's value, is probably down
It's probably down probably different.
In the twenties, somewhere in the twenties.
That would probably be a fair guess, yes.
So that's the, that's the nature of our concern, that it's dropping. It was at twenty-one percent in 2001, then we got it all the way up, as you say, to nearly forty.
Right.
But now it's back down in probably in the twenties, if my math, if cookie math is correct.
Right, and I think the reduction, at least at this point in time, between the forty and the roughly thirty-four percent, I think is a reflection of the higher disability rate. Certainly, when you look at the asset valuation based on what's happened in the markets in the last thirty days.
But this is before that asset valuation, based on the market.
Right, and it would be left, it would be left now, correct.
And the one number I see here, the jump, is the ten million to thirteen million jump last year. And is that liability based on the reevaluation of the folks who put this together that has to do with the disability? Is that, or is there some other reason why we had such a big jump in that column?
It's gonna be a combination of factors. It's going to be, you know, actuaries are basically making assumptions. So there's going to be the disability assumptions, there's the age of the participants, there's their projected rate of, you know, date of retirement, what's gonna happen with salaries. In another section of this report, once you have more of a chance, obviously, to look at it, since I just distributed it tonight, all those assumptions are laid out.
I see.
But it's not attributable to any one factor.
Okay, well, I'll look closer at it. It's just that three, it's that twenty-five percent jump in one year that is obviously of concern, and I was trying to get a handle on what that meant.
No, it's a good question. One of the things I had talked to the actuaries about earlier this year, because as you go through the report, there's a number of different figures or percentages that you can pull out in terms of what, to the degree to which the plan is funded, or what the liabilities are. So I was having a discussion with the actuaries about which one do you pick out, and which one is more meaningful. Their short answer to me, when it's all said and done, is what is the city's ability to pay? And as you see that recommended contribution rate going up, which is part of what's in this report.
And where's the recommended contribution rate?
It's on the very first page, in their, yeah, it's actually their transmittal letter.
Oops.
But essentially, when you have something going up from twenty-nine point one-three to thirty-four point seven, in a single, based on a single actuarial report, that's an indication that the city's required contribution level is something that's becoming concerning, which is why I flagged it as an issue during the budget process for FY09.
And do we know what that translates to, as far as what kind of dollar figure we'll be expected to pay?
We had expected, Councilmember Robinson, to get it, I think to have a rate about a percent or so higher. I think, in my discussions with the actuary, the reason they lowered the number slightly was just because we have a much younger workforce, that theoretically, the rate of disabilities should go down. At that time, I think at the slightly higher rate, I was looking at an annual cost, additional cost of about three, two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars a year.
Okay, so the
I can do some other quick calculations, but
Right, so back of envelope, another two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars, based on the actuary's reassessment of our commitment. And that's in part based on the, in part based on the disability, and then other things as are related in this document.
Yeah, I would say the recommended increase in the city's employer contribution is, for the most part, solely a function of the disabilities.
Okay, so that disability issue is costing, is gonna cost us two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars per year, if that's what we're saying?
It could, which is part of the reason why we're examining other plan options.
Of course, I see, okay. And you'll keep us informed as those other options come up, I'm sure.
Yes, we have to do that.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you, city manager.
Can I just, could it?
I'm sorry.
Just 'cause we've talked about this now, and probably members of the public might be interested, are we gonna post this to the city website also, as part of this meeting?
Yes, we can, yeah, we can do that. I have a PDF copy of it.
And just to clarify, that column B on that last page, fourteen, 'cause people might get alarmed when they see thirteen million versus us only having four point five million or now, market value three point two million, that we have some huge unfunded liability that we might, that we actually need to pay now. Can you clarify, is column B, does that mean that in the future, we're gonna have to pay thirteen million dollars? Or is that a net present value number of what our, all of our retirement and potential disability costs are?
I'm not an actuary, so I may wanna actually get a more educated comment than mine, but it's certainly not something that happens in one year. I mean, most pension plans are funded over a period of time, and this plan is only about seven to eight years old. So it's a relatively young plan. But certainly, I think the city's goal as an employer should be to try to get, as I mentioned, the funded ratio up, which was, as you may recall, part of the reason for FY09, we're actually contributing more than the recommended twenty-nine point one-three percent. I put in my recommended budget a contribution of thirty-one percent, and the council was supportive of that. So I think you just do, you know, do the best you can to try to get that number up. Obviously, with the assets having taken a hit with investment earnings, you know, that's something that we'll continue to watch.
I'll read through the report, but if it's not in there, I think it would be helpful if we could have a better explanation of what actual, actuarial accrued liability means.
Sure, if it's not there, just, I'll take a look at that as well, and can certainly ask the actuaries if they can provide something in writing for the council.
Great, thanks.
Just very briefly, two quick items. I just wanted to mention to the council that the police department informed me of their intention to apply for a grant through the FY2009 Law Enforcement Technology Program. This is actually a federal government program, but it's administered through the governor's office on crime prevention. They are going to submit an application for license plate recognition scanner, which the chief can certainly explain in more detail. But essentially, it's some technology that will assist the department in hopefully locating more stolen autos, as well as other types of police work. The equipment has a value of about thirty-two thousand dollars, and there are no matching funds required for this program. But I did wanna share with the council that the department was going to put in that application. Councilmember Siemens?
That's great to hear. I've, I heard that they're very effective. And it was also interesting that at the MML conference, we saw that as an example where some municipalities banded together for a grant application so they could share the device.
Yeah, I had actually mentioned that to Captain Corsick, since you and I were sitting in the same session when this came up on Friday.
And if I can just ask if that's an application for what's envisioned in the U.S.C. grants that are coming up, or if it's something different?
It's different, it's
Okay, 'cause I think there's about four million for this region in the U.S.C. grants. So you might think about that.
This is under a different program. And then just the last thing I just wanted to mention is that last week's meeting, there was some, a lot of discussion about streetlight outages, and I had followed up with an email to the council, but just for any members of the community. You know, certainly, if any resident has a concern about a streetlight being out, certainly you can contact Councilmember Irvin's office, but certainly, my office is happy to help as well. We just need the pole number. And as Councilmember Irvin indicated last week, we both have some contacts at Pepco, and we'd be happy to try to leverage those to get problems resolved more quickly. So that's it, unless there's any questions from the council.
Okay. We'll move to the next item, which is a presentation about Don Bosco-Cristo Ray High School. And we have with us Reverend Steve Chaffering, president of high school. And you're gonna tell us about your school, your program, what you've been doing, how long you've been here, et cetera.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor Williams, and thank you, council members, for hosting me this evening. I thought it would be good, after our first year, just beginning our second year of school, to come to the council, and as members of the Tacoma Park community, to inform you a bit about this new and exciting program. About fourteen years ago, in Chicago, actually, there was the Cristo Ray High School, Jesuit High School that began in Chicago, to help young people in the Pilsen neighborhood. And it did so by establishing a separately incorporated temp agency, if you will, where students would go to work one day a week to help pay for their education, but more importantly, to seek life skills that they wouldn't otherwise get in the classroom. And also, to have an interaction with the business community. That exciting model was so successful that a few years later, about four years later, it began to be replicated for, by other inner-city communities throughout the nation. And so Portland, Oregon was the first, then Tucson, Denver, and on and on. Today, we have twenty-two Cristo Ray schools. We've taken that on as the brand, if you will, throughout the country. And the Archdiocese of Washington, upon hearing of the model, thought it would be great to be able to introduce it into our greater metropolitan area. And so I was asked in the fall of 2005 to come, and move to the area, which I did on January one, and begin preparations over an eighteen-month period to start up a new school. We were given the facility of the former elementary school of Our Lady of Sorrows, which closed in the spring, or the summer, June of 2006. I'm sorry, 2005, if I have my data correct. 2006, sorry, just see, 2006 it closed. And for us to use that facility as the center hub for this new program. And then we began, actually, in temporary office buildings while the interior of the school was renovated. And for our first year, which was a year ago September, we welcomed a hundred and twenty ninth graders to begin the program. And we're happy to have twenty-five different businesses throughout Greater Washington, law firms. The students work, as I said, one day a week. It's really five days throughout the month. Monday is a rotating day, just to give you a sample of how it works. They work in job sharing. It's a job team. It's an entry-level clerical position, a full-time position from nine to five for the whole week. And what we do, most of it is filing, data processing, perhaps in a hospital, like at Holy Cross Hospital, they would do patient transport, things of that sort, maybe receptionist. It depends what they're trained for. The students come in the summer before for a three-week training program. We call it our business boot camp. And so students actually begin school on July 26th, and specifically are given training in data processing, filing, how to answer the phone, hygiene, how to Xerox, how to shake a hand and look people in the eyes. And as a result, they're learning a lot of life skills, and skills that oftentimes we might assume that people coming from families might have, but oftentimes, they're not, we might think are common sense, but they're not common in many places. And so we're trying to teach those skills, and then put them in an environment where they are looked upon, even though they're fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, 'cause we have now ninth and tenth graders, as a colleague and a peer. And it's been so successful over these fourteen years. Students have gained confidence in the workplace, have been really affirmed that they have, we've seen some results of them doing better in the classroom. As a result, on the I-TES, Iowa Test of Educational Development that we're using for our standardized testing, we tested the students. Now, they're coming from fifty different zip codes in our Washington metropolitan area, and coming to our site. And they're coming from charter schools, public schools, Catholic schools, other religious schools, and private schools, of very, varied academic levels, backgrounds. Right now, we have two hundred students, multicultural of very, varied academic levels, backgrounds, right now we have 200 students, multicultural, boys and girls, about half are black, but there would be African-American, Caribbean, and also Nigerian predominantly, the others are predominantly Latino, mostly El Salvador reflective of our community and our surroundings. We find that with all of that academic level, we saw that from the beginning of the year till the end, we tested them twice, with our interaction and personal rapport, and then the help of the confidence that they're receiving, the school average went up academically by eight points, which normally they say two or three points would be excellent for a school to achieve that, so we're very, very happy that we've achieved seven to eight points. We have had tremendous interest in the program, so much so that we have, and you'll see that in your, the information packet that I distributed to you, and I give you a summary of the fact sheet of this, as well as a sampling of all the places where the students working. They're working in law firms such as Jones Day, Howery, right now there are 19 students employed at Georgetown University, we also have them up in Gaithersburg at Boland, which is an HVAC, HVAC firm, and also in Laurel, at Chevy Chase Bank they're working, and also at a number of places, even C-SPAN, and we're very happy to, to have that sampling of their careers and, and give that great, great educational experience. So for us, it's very exciting, we would, we know that we have to grow, I, I see your beautiful seal behind you, because we're talking about, we're using now Ray of Hope, so I see the sun rays, you know, as part of the symbol of the mountains to climb that these young people are having, and yet this is giving them hope for themselves and respect for their future. They see themselves valued in being able to give this, get this responsibility and this job experience. You can quite imagine that when they're going to college, now the statistic at the moment is 99 percent are going to college in other schools, we don't have seniors yet, so we haven't had that delight, but we're looking forward to preparing them for college and beyond, not only to get to college, but also to get through college, and we find that this two-track model is very exciting and has been very successful, so I wanted to present that to you. We, we have hopes to grow, our facility is very small at the moment, we have no science labs, or library, or offices per se, we're, we're adapting classrooms at the moment, doing some for our biology virtual dissections and things through laptops, we've, we've tried to, we know that we're going to have to expand our facility a bit, and want to become good neighbors and certainly a very good facility of high school. We want to still remain a small school, because we feel that that's the best way to interact with the young people, but I thought I would give you that basic introduction, and perhaps entertain some questions or other things for you. In your packet, as you see on the right-hand side, besides my card, and Councilman Siemens was good enough to come and have a tour and, and be with us, we enjoy welcoming any, any of you to come for a tour and meet our students. I'm happy to say that I don't give the tour, I have the students give the tour, since they have so many of the skills now, they're able to walk you around and even sit at lunch and interact and give you some more of their direct experience, so it, it really is wonderful. On the right-hand side, you'll see some of the stories that we've had, George Will just wrote about the Cristo Ray program in the September 14, 2008 Outlook section of the Post, where he commented about that particular, our particular model, and then on the left, as I said, the facts at a glance, and then the job clients, the program clients we have with our corporate work-study program. Finally, I just to, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Council.
No, go ahead.
No, I, I just wanted to say that there are, there are so many examples and stories, but I think the, the most impressive, not impressive, not just what the students are doing, but the most impressive for me is the confidence that the students are getting from the workplace, and from the jobs and the skills and the interaction, and what we find is that education is not only taking place in the four walls of the classroom, but has extended itself into the community and into the business place.
Councilwoman Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for coming here this evening, appreciate it. I, as you said, had the pleasure of taking a tour of your facility last year, and I think the thing I enjoyed the most was the opportunity to sit down at lunch with the students, and talk with them, interact with them, and it was, just as you characterized, it, a group of young men and women who are very self-confident and very enthusiastic about the opportunity they have at your school. I left there wondering, you know, what we at the city council could do to be supportive of your work in the school, and maybe reach out and, and have more of our young people involved in your program. I know that a lot of the, as you said, there's 50 zip codes represented by the students in your, in your school, I would like to see that narrowed down to just one. I think we have many young people who could benefit from, from your school and, and the education you're giving them, it's, you're really teaching them not just the theories and the basics, but you're also teaching them those things they need when the rubber meets the road. So I would be interested to hear how we might help you to find more students here locally, and I also, from talking with, with you, know that finding more local employers who would be interested in partnering with you in this education is, would be helpful to you, and it would also be helpful to those employers, because although it's nice to hear that you found employers in Gaithersburg, I'm sure that's a hardship on you and to the students, and it might be advantageous if we were able to attract more local business, business people to take on students, so if you have any ideas on how we can get our employers and also our young people involved, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, Councilman, you know, there are two other aspects that you've met, you alluded to that I didn't mention in my introduction, one is that students, we were very much into trying to bring in a large group of students, and not so many, not so much the number, but a wide variety, diverse community, it's very important to us, but also the poorest, and so the average family of four is under $32,000 at the moment, and certainly that comes through, we have a PSAS firm that, or testing to make sure that their W2s, et cetera, validate their poverty level, we want to make sure that we're out to serve those students, so we're selective in that, love to have more students from the Tacoma Park, we do have some, and love to have the more from the immediate area. Obviously, the beauty of being on the New Hampshire corridor and about a mile, 1.6 miles from the Tacoma Station, it's wonderful for us to have that accessibility to students, but certainly that's a factor, would love to have more businesses in the area, we're, now it's a hardship getting, all the students have to come to school before, and we take them to the job site, they don't get there on their own, we take them there, so transportation is certainly, it's, it's a difficulty at the moment, but we're doing that because it's, it's very important to the program, so having something locally would, would be tremendous for us, even more jobs and businesses involved, and I think it's great for the community. So seeking ways, so we're looking, my point was that we're looking for gatekeepers, we can't go out and advertise the program such, because many people would love to come to it, but we have to vet them through the process to make sure that there's the level, and also to see if there's a spark in the young person's eye, not only if they've successfully completed eighth grade, but if there's something that can give us indication of the desire of wanting to go to college, to change their, for their future, but also employability, because we have to have some seeds of the willingness for them to be trained to be successful in the workplace, and we do that in different ways through our interview process, but that's very important for us, so that's why, and we're, we're trying to also bring together the different communities, so that when they go and return back to the community, there is a good interaction culturally and ethnically, because we find that sometimes it's very difficult for different communities, ethnic communities to live together, and we hope that we can instill some of that in these young people as they move forth and return to their communities, it's so important for our future. And then lastly, I have to say that since your visit, we did have an outreach to the Tacoma Park Recreation Facility, which is on New Hampshire, Deborah there has been very, very helpful, she has also taken initiative to speak to the student, to the young people that come to the center about the school, we've had some contact there, our students, because we have a limited recreational facility, are using some of the facility there for some of our recreation, so we struck up a great rapport, Deborah has come over for a visit and a tour of the school as well. I want, I wrote that down because I wanted you to, to know that, that has happened, and we're very appreciative of Deborah's initiative, and our athletic director Frank Simpson has, and both of them have worked together in, in also inviting other students from the recreational facility to go through, but that's one initiative, perhaps there are other ideas. We're also, another way that we're looking at is safety and security of the building in that area, just to make it known more in the community, perhaps a better drive-by by, you know, to, to, that we know that there's a high school going on there, that students are there, also, we know that there have been some gang taggings at our, in our little playground, et cetera, the word is out that we have students there, and it would be wonderful if the police or others are aware even more, they are now, but perhaps a drive-through from time to time, we're looking to see how we could have a good area, especially when students and young people cross New Hampshire, and to catch the bus, et cetera, so that's another thing I wanted to, to mention as well, those two things.
I'm thrilled to hear that the recreation director was there and got a chance to tour the school, and has been helpful to you at the rec center on New Hampshire Avenue, and Barb, I trust that she will also be talking about the, the school with the young people in this neighborhood too, here at the community center. Chief Rukucci is here with us tonight, so I'm sure he heard your, your desire, and-
I think he's been by.
And I trust that you also are contacting the police anytime that you do have gang tags, or any incident that might be of interest to them, because it's not something they'll know about unless you call them.
Yes, and the chief and our principal have had conversations, so it's great.
Good. I wonder if, Barb, if maybe snapshots, or a segment, or a newsletter article might be helpful, and just expanding the awareness in the community of the school, I think it's an exciting program they run, and the community would be interested to hear about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Barry?
Father, welcome tonight, and let me say that we are blessed, pun intended, we need all the help we can get, divine and otherwise, to, to welcome the absolutely, you know, famous, and justly so, Jesuit education to our community, going way back to the 14th century and maybe even earlier, the Jesuits have been, you know, world-famous for the quality of their education, and Georgetown University, of course, being a premier example of that. I'd certainly like to encourage you to get further involved in the redevelopment of the New Hampshire corridor, and I know our good friend, who is the executive director of the Crossroads Development Authority, Mr. Irwin Mack, would be delighted to work with you, he represents more than 200 businesses at the Crossroads, and not only is there the small entrepreneur dimension there, but there's also the nonprofit sector, represented by a range of organizations, everything from early childhood development to community and health services for the poorer residents of the area, to banks, and I noticed BF Saul is a contributor to your efforts, they have a branch there, and I'm sure would be very interested in helping with your, you know, workplace skills effort, as would a number of other businesses and nonprofits in the area, so maybe we could talk offline, or I'll contact Irwin on, on our behalf tomorrow, and let him know that he should contact you, because it's a wealth of opportunity there for the young people, get them involved in this area, which has, as you know, many challenges, but also a lot of opportunities.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Robinson?
I'm welcome, thank you.
I'm, I'm the numbers guy tonight, so I'm going to ask you, I'm going to ask you a couple of numbers questions. You have, let's see, one of these sheets, around 400 kids in the ninth and 10th grade now, do I have that right?
200.
200 in each grade, or 200 total?
200 total.
Okay, and you hope to, to expand, as your, as your success strengthens?
Absolutely, well, we'd like to, I think, probably ideally 450 to 500.
Okay, and, and does that, does the facility where you are accommodate those numbers?
No, it does not.
Okay, and where are you looking to expand?
Well, we hope to expand at the present facility, perhaps to put a limited edition on, we, we believe we have enough classroom space, but as I indicated earlier, we don't have a science lab or library space.
Yes, I remember hearing that, okay, so, but, so you're, you're going to struggle perhaps with where you, where you are, but you're committed to that, that location for now?
Exactly, well, we're committed for that location, I think, for the long run, because they, we've, we've put in considerable amount into the interior renovation, I think the Archdiocese of Washington is very committed to the site, obviously they're the owners of the site, being that Our Lady of Sorrows Church is there, they're happy that they're able to renovate the facility to, to really, what we want to do is exteriorly beautify it as well, because interiorly right now, I think Councilman Siemens can attest to that, and you're all welcome, try to, to make sure that the facility doesn't become dilapidated, and, and, and we're, we're grateful that we've been able to do that, so there's been a great commitment there, I think, so I don't think we're going to be searching for another area site, at least, I think in this day and age financially, what we've done already, I would hate to leave behind.
Yeah, yeah, of course, okay, so, now, a couple more of these kind of financial questions, you've gotten a grant from Bill and Melinda Gates, that over $15 million, but that's not for this location, that's for the entire network?
That's for the replication of, we have not gotten that, we, the network, the Cristo Ray Network, which is the, it's a school system, I would think.
I understand.
To replicate the small school model.
I understand, and who is Don Bosco?
Don is like, from the Godfather movies, you remember, Don Corleone?
Yeah.
Okay, so Don is father in Italian, and Father John Bosco, St. John Bosco, was the founder of the Sallesians, who dedicated to youth, were getting them jobs, et cetera, so-
When did he live?
He lived in 1815 to 1888.
Where was that?
In Turin, Italy.
Okay, thanks.
And, and at the heels of the Industrial Revolution.
I see.
With young people there.
I see, and the per-cost average is about $14,000, is that on this Cape Outlook document?
Correct.
So that's your cost to provide this, this, but it says here that, and the tuition is about $2,300 or something like that, but 80 percent gets tuition assistance, and the average aid, average aid is $1,300, which means that the tuition is brought down in many instances to $1,000 per year, it sounds like to me.
$975, to be specific, while my number is, Councilman.
Good, okay, so, but it costs about 15, 14, 15,000, in, in your estimate, to educate kids?
This year, this year.
This year, so is that $12,000 or $13,000 differential, is that, tell me a little bit about how that's raised, of course, from, perhaps the church makes a contribution, and perhaps grants and so forth make a contribution towards that, now I'm curious about the actual contract that you have with the businesses where these kids work, and can you elucidate a little bit on how that works?
Well, that varies a bit, just to see the progression, obviously our overhead costs, the initial part of the school, when you only have ninth graders and you have faculty and a building and utilities to maintain, your, your cost per student is really $18,000.
Okay.
In the Cape presentation that I made, we were looking ahead to this year, which is brought down to 15, we were hoping that it would come down to 12.
So tell me where that differential comes from?
So the differential is that both lead donations.
All right.
And the cost per student, usually about the businesses, per job team, we're talking about anywhere from $6,000 to $7,000 per student, so for a job team, it's approximately $30,000, let's say.
I'm sorry, you have to step back a second, for a job team, oh, that's several kids.
That's right, about four, between $27,000 and $30,000.
So you place them in a business, and that, and the business brings in to Cristo Bosco Del Ray about $30,000.
That's right.
So, in essence, the business is hiring four or five trained kids for a year's time for about $30,000.
That's right.
So they're getting the equivalent of a full-time 15-hour, dollar an hour kid, or something like that.
Exactly.
For about, for a full-time job.
That's right.
Okay, I understand.
And all the, all the insurances and taxes are taken care of by the temp agency, which is called the Hire for Ed Corporate Work-Study Program.
Okay, I don't want to take up too much time here, and I appreciate your responding to those numbers, that was what was particularly interesting to me, thanks again.
Sure, you're welcome. Sure, you're welcome.
Councilmember Clay.
And if you'd like to contribute to that fundraiser.
I'm surprised that your arms are open, as well as your pocketbook.
Thank you.
Councilmember Clay.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thanks, Council.
You're actually in my ward, and I would love to have a tour of your school. I changed dogs last year, so I've been very busy, and watched the different events go by and haven't been able to cut loose from my job to go attend them, but I would like to do that. There's two schools in my ward, and they're both religious schools. And one of the schools, a lot of trouble with, and the parents who come and go to that school, I'll just say that they're not very nice to the neighbors, and leave it at that. After your school came in and replaced the elementary school, the neighbors in the area reported to me that the amount of gum wrappers and candy wrappers and all of that around the school and in the neighborhood that used to be there from the kids going back and forth to the school largely diminished. And that's one thing that the neighbors have noted, is that the school in that way is being a good neighbor to the community, and I appreciate that, and the neighbors in the community really appreciate that. I would like to know more about the expansion and how you're gonna accommodate that, and how the city might be able to work with you, or maybe look at what the impact would be on the surrounding neighborhoods, so that we could work together on that issue. And I'll leave it at that, so we don't take any more time for the other folks tonight. But I do really appreciate you coming and telling us about the school and sharing the points. Thank you.
Great. And please, Council, we would be happy to talk offline, as you say, to find out what that process might be. We have some plans that we'd like to share. Certainly, we've already spoken to some departments in Tacoma Park about those regarding, you know, the drainage and things of that sort with the expansion, and to also beautify the front, and how we'd like to make that former elementary school a proper high school for our preparations. So we'd be happy to do that.
That all sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wright.
Thanks so much. Sounds like you're running a wonderful school. I'd also love to take a tour. I'm always interested in innovative approaches to educating our nation's children. Just had a quick comment about George Will's article, not really directed at you, but perhaps it's more about George Will's perspective on how we educate our children, and that he views this, or compares this to McDonald's and its replication. And I'm sure that the quality of education you're producing is not anything compared to the quality of McDonald's burgers, but I think that's more commentary of George Will's perspective on how we should educate our children. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much for telling us all about the school and the process that you use and the potential opportunities for us to help you and you to help us.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Williams, and thank you each and every one of you for your questions and your interest. Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. We have two items on there. Resolution of support for housing opportunity, commission purchase of 717 Slank Creek Parkway, and a resolution supporting continued charitable giving by Freddie Mac and Fannie Mae. Would somebody like to introduce the consent agenda? And is there a second?
I'll second it.
Moved by Councilmember Siemens, seconded by Councilmember Robinson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye, aye. Is it a consent, silly?
I think we have to do a, Jesse's on top of it.
No, we don't have to do a roll call, because there's nothing that needs a roll call on it.
Okay. How do you know when something needs a roll call?
Second reading or single reading.
Okay.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Ayes have it. I did one correctly this time.
It's progress.
We will now move to work session, and the next item is a report from the Emergency Preparedness And we have the two co-chairs with us. Wakan Mergan and Chief Rukucci.
Good evening, Mayor Williams, City Manager, Councilmembers. This is a second report for this committee under both of our leadership, Chief Rukucci and myself, as co-chair of this committee. As requested by the council, we have developed bylaws, and we are in the process of adopting finally, after corrections. And as one step, let me first describe a little bit, we defined the position or the tenure of the resident chair, and we defined the reelection method for the resident chair. We laid out what people, committee members have to do to become a full-fledged committee member, for example, after the training of the FEMA courses, 1700, so they know about emergency preparedness. But as one item, the committee prior to my tenure as chair has voted to dismiss members who are not attending and not carrying out the business of the committee. And this is accepted, but we are not in a position to dismiss members. So there has to be an angle of where the council will admit these members, they have to dismiss the members. Perhaps in our recommendation, maybe we have to vote for them to be dismissed, and give recommendation to the council. I hope this will never happen. I hope we always have cooperative members, but to be in order, I think you have to state what you think about that. So in attachment of your, you have the bylaws, and I don't expect today to hear anything about it, but I would like to have recommendation what you think. Now the tasks. The main task and few activities during this period was the Tacoma Park Emergency Preparedness manual. Gradually, Chief Rukucci and myself, as we looked in the business, we discovered that the manual which was prepared 2004 had nothing changed, no additions, as recommended by our committee, that changed. So we formed a task force to do just that. And we're in the process of finishing this document. And it's our goal to have a document which is easy readable, which has table of content, which has an indication when it was changed, and when it was reviewed again, like you should do with all these documents do, which, so anybody who takes this document in his or her hands knows exactly where to find things, what the regulations are. There's an additional component to it, and the component is, in this document, there are tasks assigned to members of the administration here. And the question asked by our committee is, do they really know what they are assigned to? And I think this will come out when we have training sessions, and, but there has to be further clarification, this will have to be worked out. We succeeded to have almost full complement of resident members. You might recall that I came for you last time and said we need more resident members, please help me to get them. We might, in a short while, even have a full complement of resident members on this committee. And I think this is kind of encouraging. We established criteria for these resident members, and one criterion is that we want them, we want them to have an deep interest in emergency preparedness, then we want them to be, we would like to diversity members, so of different population of the community, particularly because we concern that we overlook interest somebody has, and then we would like to have some expertise in emergency, if possible. I reported last time to you that we have started as a pilot study initiated by the county Department of Health and Human Services, a program called Neighborhood Ready. A similar program exists in Howard County, and ours was modeled after this. And for this program, the funding expired about in May of 2008. And so from the county, the initiative kind of died off. Recently, I heard that they have got some funds, but I would like to come back and assess this program that we had, and therefore I scheduled a meeting on November 15 with all the people who were involved in this pilot study, and to review what we have done, what did we accomplish. To describe this, Neighborhood Ready is like this. It tries to establish, first, it addresses shelter-in-place situations. So it doesn't address specifically evacuations. So if you're shelter-in-place, then it tries to create clusters of neighbors, either in apartments or in city streets, who help each other, communicate with each other and help each other. And, but we learned in the beginning, to keep something like this alive, and people interested in it, you need local leadership. You need people, neighbors, who really take over. A committee like ours cannot be the directors, it has to be local. And perhaps in order to expand this over the city, perhaps you need some administrative support for a program like this. I will evaluate it on November 15, as I said, and I will make a report on what we find. I'd like to report on Montgomery County. I was very much concerned, because our efforts in emergency preparedness are very much linked to the county. We have a memorandum of understanding, and we interact with the county, and therefore what the county does matters to us. And there was a period of time when their programs were in reorganization, and we could not get things through the county. Now, this has changed recently, and this is very encouraging. The Christopher Voss was appointed, and our representative from the county who sits on the committee reported that suddenly things are starting to move. So many items which were put aside and were sleeping now suddenly await the new life. Outreach. I think one of the main tasks of our committee is to do the outreach, to talk to the citizens of Tacoma Park, to get an understanding with the citizens, what the city does in emergencies, to get a buy-in when the citizens prepare for emergencies, and so on. And we did mainly in the past do this outreach by being present at fairs, and we have a table there and explain things. And the main thing we pushed at these times was the Montgomery Ready Plan 9, which means the nine items we should do, make your household ready for emergencies. And then in addition, we discussed people with disabilities and preparing PETS for emergencies, which are all items which need to be discussed and need to be, we have people to be aware of it. The, one important thing was we pushed at these fairs, the buy-in with the TP Alert system, which is a system by which people get informed about critical situations, either by telephone, by computer, or whatever. And we got in these recent years considerable increase in number of subscriptions. This committee decided that these fairs, it doesn't reach, doesn't not reach enough people. So we decided to have a sequence of information letters for the Tacoma Park Newsletter. So we will have 12 of these items, and the first one will be appearing in the November Newsletter of Tacoma Park. We described there how people are being informed about emergencies, the gross 911, and all these things. We discussed, and we would like to approach the cable, to perhaps have with them a program, in a snapshot program, what to do for emergencies, how to prepare, and so on. The TP Alert system is, I think, fairly important, and is one of the measures by which we can reach people fairly effectively. It is a program which is a public notification program, which hasn't cost the city a penny because it was supported by grants. Now, issues. Issues we are dealing with. One issue is volunteers in emergencies. And the concept is what role do these volunteers play in emergencies? In order to get some clarification, we invited to one of our meetings Mrs. Anne Evans, who is the director of the Volunteer Center of Montgomery County. And I like, from this meeting, we built on this meeting, and we have a further discussion with her, have some formal interaction with her. There are special programs, for example, one is Emergency Action Team, the Medical Reserve Corps, by which trained volunteers will be available in emergencies. Similar HEM operators. Through the operations of Mr. Tom Horn, we have made contact with RACES and with React, and we hope to explore this further. And in both situations, we will come back to the council, because if we make formal arrangements, I think the council has to approve these things. A disappointment for me is the SERT membership. I myself am a trained SERT member, and so is Councilmember Siemens. However, I was unable so far to know how many people have been trained by SERT in Tacoma Park. This has to do with the confusion which happened at the county. When we first introduced this program, they had to pitch to us, and we had background checks and all this stuff, and this all has disappeared. And I've been up to this time not able to get a formal recognition of these are members living in Tacoma Park. And this is critically important, because SERT is not only one-time training, it's continuous training. If people don't show up at the SERT organization's meetings, they will not be ready as they should be. Another concern I have is the concern, the interaction with major units in the city, and their preparedness for emergencies. I'm looking at the different owners of apartment houses, I'm looking at tenant associations, I'm looking at, and I have approached the city to be able to speak, because they meet on a, I think, quarterly basis with these representatives, to speak to them and to ask them, what are your plans for emergencies? Because I think it's important for us, and to know what is there, and if it's not there, to stimulate them to get ready for emergencies. Now, I would like to go with you over the list of deliverables. It was mentioned that we are still, need to be prepared for the flu epidemics, and the city of Tacoma Park has a plan, which is called the COOP Plan, C-O-O-P Plan, which describes the continuity of operation in case of such an event. And this plan is completed, and we were told by the county that we are ahead of many other municipalities in the area because of the having this plan available. They suggested to us to make it for all situations where we don't have full staff, and we have not done this yet. We are waiting for them to make their general plan ready, and then we'd like to link into their plan. So it has to be revised, but at the present time, it's finished, it's there. The Emergency Operations Plan I told you about is not there, and we hope to have it done soon, including the only annexes which belong to it. We have finished the Emergency Communication Plan, and this is subject, the article I wrote about it. We have done the outreach, and we wrote articles about it. Neighborhood Ready I told you about November 11. Status and progress of major city Tacoma Park Preparedness Milestones. For a long time, emergency supplies for the city, in case of emergency, were not there, were not purchased, and they were not there. And this, because of the storage, we didn't have facilities to store them, Chief Rukucci has managed to get, A, purchase the emergency supplies, and B, find storage for those, so this problem is solved. The city has participated in county-wide exercises of emergency preparedness. What is missing is specific exercise for Tacoma Park, and they're waiting for having all the manuals ready to do that. And I think this is something we would like to push, we have done. I told you about the SERT volunteers. We have dramatically increased participation in TP Alert. Currently, 1,012 residents are registered, and this year, we have added 366 more people to this. It's far not our 17,000 residents of Tacoma Park, but it's a good beginning, I think. It's far not our 17,000 residents of Tacoma Park, but it's a good beginning, I think. The other, two items, we are in the process of getting new members asserted, certified in FEMA Training 100 and 700. I'm open for questions.
Let me just add two things, real quick. The department heads, which is the board of our city manager, are reviewing and are updating their annexes. So they're updated, they have met with their employees to go over the plans, so they are familiar with what they do in an emergency. So that's an ongoing process. Our office of the chief are assisting the chair with revisions on the manual and assisting on the newsletter articles, which will be a series coming out in the city's newsletter over the next few months. So we're working very closely. I might add that this is probably, of all the committees that I support, is one of my most active committees and works very hard in accomplishing the goals that we have and we are working for. Captain Coorsy Serge is my representative to the county and sits on the committee that prepares for emergency management and the county works with us very closely on any issues that come up. It's a good working relationship and we continue to work with them. As the chair said, with the additional filing of a chairman of their department, a full-time employee, things are starting to move ahead, which has kind of slowed down in the county for a while. So we're on the right path.
Any questions? Councilmember DeSimmons.
Thank you, Mayor. Glad to hear the progress the committee's making and I attribute it to the leadership with the two co-chairs being here tonight. I was unclear on your testimony, though, about members of the committee. Did you say that you are fully staffed now on the committee?
We have one open position and I'm looking for, at people, perhaps I can fill it, but I'm not sure.
Okay, so there are opportunities for community members to participate on this successful committee.
I'm rooting hard on it.
Okay, great. Another thing that I was unclear on, the Emergency Operations Plan, is that, does that include contingency plans for reasonable possibilities and interruptions of operations?
Yeah, they have two different plans. One is COOP, which was done, I think.
Our former deputy city manager, Wayne Hobbs, got that report completed before he retired. It's a COOP Plan and then we have our Emergency Operations Plan. Both plans basically take into account whether it's a sickness or disruption of government service and then the other plan would take in if we had a major, how we work with the county. So both plans, I think, cover everything you're about to ask about.
Okay. The, yeah, at the MML conference, several of us had the opportunity to sit in and one of the sessions, it talked about planning for contingencies. An example they gave was a recent incident in another municipality where they had a building burned down in their public works and they lost all their trash trucks. Is that the kind of contingencies that would be covered in this, in one of those plans?
I think the contingency plan is mainly if we don't have the full staffing of, how to provide services if the city is not staffed fully.
Okay.
That's a contingency. And then there are certain things, for example, you have to make sure your records are preserved, make sure your records are in a different place, you don't have all in one place. So there are copies of your records in different facilities and so on, so that all these contingencies in case you don't, you're not fully staffed. And as the Operations Plan addresses, what happens if an emergency happens in the city of Tacoma Park, let's say hurricane or whatever.
Okay.
To answer your question, Councilman, if we had something like that, there's contingencies, we can ask the county for assistance as a part. Let's say there's a major hurricane, it's not just gonna, well, hopefully it wouldn't just hit Tacoma Park, although we do know tornadoes can hit one little spot and move on, but let's say a major hurricane hit Montgomery County, which it's done a few times, we would be working in hand-in-hand. If we needed, we can request them for different services, which would probably take into contingency you're talking about. Do we have every contingency laid out? No, we just have general guidelines on where we can go for help in our emergency and what we would do.
Okay. I look forward to seeing your revised book, the manual, when it's completed and get a better understanding of it and then maybe we can talk again about what we'd like to see from the council.
But just to add something, for example, in our Operations Plan, there is a plan, what private sources we can activate in case our city sources are not there for the pre-removal or whatever, you know? There's always long lists of what we can do if.
Okay. On the CERT volunteers, I appreciate your recognizing that I completed that training last year and, as you know, my wife did also. I have been concerned that with the turmoil they've had in the organization at the county in that area of emergency preparedness, that, that maybe we haven't moved this far along here in Tacoma Park. So if there's any way that we can help from this council to attract volunteers to a program, you know, when is the program solidified, is the training available again? And are the records being better maintained so that we know who does complete the training? I, you know, as you mentioned, Joyce and I never got ID cards recognizing us as having completed the, the training program, nor have we had any follow-up training since. And so I think that would be a priority for the committee to, to try to make sure that Tacoma Park's CERT volunteers are as well organized as we can be and to push forward with getting more people through the training program.
I'd like to know, I'd like to know who's here.
The problem's just not in Tacoma Park, it's accountable. But Robert Jones, the county representative, has been very helpful and we have expressed our concerns and he's taken aback. I think now with somebody on board, that, I think the CERT program will get a different emphasis and a much more supervision over it.
I see a great opportunity for Tacoma Park to take a leadership role in.
I personally want to take more training, for example, I want to like to take shelter training.
Right.
So there's more things we'd like to have on board.
As would Joyce and I. And then lastly, I know the, the emergency preparation that you have mentioned to me privately about the Franklin Apartments, I've been negligent in not getting, working closely with you to get that really move along. And I think that is important and so I would like to schedule a meeting between you and Diane Berkeley and me to truly make that happen in the short term. And also some other emergency preparation training that you and I have talked about.
Because this is what I said to stakeholders, the people who run these friendly powers, they have to have a plan. And we have to ask them, what plan do you have? And we should push them to have a plan.
Right. And we need to push ourselves to make sure we get our work done too. I thank you for coming tonight.
And if I can just add that one of the things that I got a copy of recently was correspondence from the Council of Governments about what MOUs the city has signed or not signed for various regional agreements. And I was heartened to see that we have executed all of them that we need to do and that there's one coming up in 2009 that sounds like we're on track for. And a lot of that was through the city attorney's office. And we're in good shape on all of those with all of the various agreements that we need to have in place. Any other questions, Councilmember DeSimmons?
Just quickly, I want to say thank you to both of you. Thank you for your volunteer leadership, Wolfgang. I'm sure much of this would not have been accomplished without you. And this is really a model for how the other committees can operate with specific deliverables and agreement with the council on what they're going to work on. So I very much appreciate that. And I also am interested in the idea of Tacoma Park doing its own exercises once its plan is completely solidified. I think that frequently, if you don't do that, the plan goes on the shelf and then people sort of forget about it and actually don't know what to do when the emergency happens. So I think the exercises are very important. Thanks a lot.
Councilmember DeSimmons?
Yes, thank you both. I had one follow-up to something that Councilmember DeSimmons mentioned. I was also at that risk management workshop in Cambridge. And I also wonder whether what you do can be some kind of a model for our assessment of risk, not only at the broader emergency, the format of broader emergencies, but smaller items too. And the, the public works facility burning down in the example that we saw had a direct impact on the insurance fund that was in place for that city. And the person who was presenting was a member, was, was from that insurance fund. And so he's saying, make sure you look at the risks that you have, assess them, figure out what you'll, what you're going to do if something happens. And so I'm hoping that either what you, what you're doing, your kind of planning can be a model for those, that kind of evaluation for us if we haven't already done it, or that you can tackle certain things in our city if it's appropriate. So that was my comment on, on that. And the other question I had was based on the meetings and attendance requirements, and this is kind of a, has a little bit of general application for the rest of us as regards to other committees that we, that we have reporting to us. Failure to support, I'm reading failure to support initiatives and to attend meetings will result in termination. And after three unexcused absences, the committee will vote on continued membership, submit the decision to the city of Tacoma Park Council for action. So I'm assuming that, I'm not, I'm a newcomer on this, on this council, so I don't know if you're satisfied with the way the process has worked to date? If you have, if there have been people that you have determined ought not be on the committee because of absence and have you, have you submitted to us a request and have we, have we come through on that?
It sounded to me like you hadn't gotten to that point yet. No.
We have not gotten to the point, it was institution made by the previous committee prior to both of our.
Both of us come home.
Is that something that you're comfortable with?
Yeah, but my point was, if we decide something like this, the council has to approve it.
The removal would have to be approved by you all.
I understand. And the reason I bring it up in brief now is just to kind of have it be a point of discussion so that we're all aware that it's something in your bylaws and that it may serve us well as we evaluate our relationship with other committees. But thank you for being here.
Let me answer one thing. Just so you know, when we have like snow emergencies, tree emergencies, I know for a fact that Daryl, our public works director, has a list of subcontractors that she can go to in an emergency. Because every time we prepare, I know when we prepare, when we thought we were getting a storm, she had a list that she sent to me so we would know in advance. She had people that she can rely on, especially if we couldn't get our employees back in. So I know for a fact, that is a part, when we say small emergencies, let's say a bunch of trees fell in the city, we do have a list of subcontractors the city can go to. And the city apparently has in the past, I've been told.
I'm not surprised that Daryl's on top of it. She's a very organized person and I appreciate that.
And if I can just make a quick comment, that sounds like a number of my colleagues were at the risk management session at the MML conference. I wondered why I didn't see anybody at the session that I moderated, which was Public Safety and Interoperability. And I'll have a number of questions for the chief tomorrow when we meet.
We knew you had it covered, Mayor.
You missed a good one. Thank you both.
Thank you.
We'll take a very short break and then we will come back for the next item, which is the Ethics Commission Annual Report and then discussion of proposed amendments to the Ethics Orders.
I sent you the answer on that. So you'll have, also, Mrs. Simons will have a press release. Thanks for the manual that we asked for Friday night.
Is the volunteer activities, do I have that right?
Yes, that involves volunteer activities.
And the first two were the legislative aspects that relate more or less to Councilmember Wright?
The first one was the legislative issues that actually stands for the proposed amendments that I think we're going to be discussing later.
Yes.
And then the second issue also involved volunteer activities, which I think are actually pretty similar to Councilmember's.
Okay. And I had asked her an opinion through you and the City Attorney's Office about the one thing that you do touch on briefly, and that was disqualifying business interests.
And we'll get to that with the next item.
Okay. So although I had made that request, does it mean you haven't gotten to that yet? Or does it mean that you did consider it and the changes that are reflected in this document reflect your recommendations?
It sounds like you made your request to the City Attorney, not to the Ethics.
I guess that's true. I guess I didn't know who to make the request to, but I did make it here on the dais and I didn't know who it went to. Okay. So we can just talk about that later.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Just clarifying.
Any other questions on the report from the committee's activities? Okay, thank you. And I guess now you stay at the table and Ken joins us and we go to the next item. And then there's Councilmember Robinson's question.
Okay. First, let me just explain that the poor Ethics Commission hasn't considered the proposed language that's before you tonight through no fault of their own. I had made a draft based on essentially picking up the state code language applicable to members of the General Assembly. And I had given the draft to Emily and the commission to review. And pardon Jesse, but the language was just too confusing and it would be a benefit to the city to try to simplify it. So I went back to the drawing board and the commission had a chance to weigh in on that. So with that warning, I don't know if Emily's comfortable talking about the proposal tonight without having that with the commission.
I'm comfortable talking about because the general idea, I don't think the substance is, or the intention of what the substance would be hasn't really changed. I think the language has changed and I can speak for what the commission's thoughts are on the substance, if not the precise language, because we haven't sat together as a commission yet and reviewed the changes in the language.
Okay. And the version that's here is your revision of what they first looked at?
Right.
Okay.
As to Councilmember Robinson's question, aware of the issue that you raised, I think I've provided the council some feedback just by email. But I think that comes down to a, really just a policy question. I don't think there's clear consensus from the councils that that needs to be changed. I'm not sure what the, that issue has been presented to the Ethics Commission. I think that's something they're going to think about. So I haven't proposed any changes along those lines. I'm not opposed to changing that as from a legal standpoint. Just I'm not sure what you all want to do, so I haven't made any suggestions.
Then maybe Councilmember Robinson, if you can just take a minute to restate your issue and concern, and then Ken, if you can give us any reaction to that now, that will help us decide whether what we are talking about here is a policy decision on our part or whether we think that we need some proposed language from you.
Okay. It might also be helpful to get an opinion from the Ethics Committee on that also, whether they think we should adopt a policy change.
Right.
Sure. Okay. Let me guide you through my quickie analysis here using this document. In the section C on page three, which is the Employment of Financial Interests General Restriction portion, employment or financial interests. And as I read this, as it relates to my experience, before I was on the council, I feel kind of like a ping pong ball. And so now I'll describe to you the ping pong ball aspects. Prohibitions. A covered person may not be employed by any business subject to the authority of his or her governmental unit or which is negotiating or entering a contract with a governmental unit. And I read that as, a person can't be on the council if they work for a company, let's say, that has a contract with the city. I believe that's what that says. A council member can't work for a company that has a contract with the city. I think that's what 1A means. You'd have to clarify that. And let me just kind of run through this and then we can come back and you can clarify in general. Furthermore, a council member can't have a relationship or a financial interest that would impair the impartiality or independence of judgment. So that's kind of lays out the full intent of this section, section C1. Then in section C2, it says, but there are some exceptions to that. And it says, if you're on a board or a commission or a task force, that wouldn't apply, as I read it. Or in B, if it's publicly disclosed, it doesn't apply. Or C, if the duties are ministerial, or if it doesn't create a conflict of interest, that doesn't apply. That prohibition doesn't apply. Or D, if you have only infrequent conflicts of interest or apparent conflict of interest, and if you recuse yourself, it doesn't apply. And then the last sentence there, so first, you take it away. You can't be a council member and work for a business that has a contract with the city. But, then it's given, but there's some exceptions here. And then finally, it's taken away again. And here's where it's taken away, that's the last sentence of section D. However, in no event shall the city contract with entities that employ a council member in a position where the council member is likely to receive a direct financial or professional benefit as a result of that contract with the city, or entitles or entities in which a council member has a financial interest. And that last portion of the sentence, now I'm fully ping ponged back to the other side. So my reading of this is, you can't be a council member and work for a company that has a contract with the city, except for a bunch of exceptions. However, you can't have a financial interest in a company. And none of these terms to me are defined what a financial interest is. And I know that we've addressed that a little bit with the kind of the 3% rule and so forth elsewhere in this document. But, and so feeling like a ping pong ball, I added a few more words that I'll give to you that, I tried to put together the gist of what my concern is in a final sentence or a final section, which reads, and I'll kind of roll right through. However, in no event shall the city contract with entities that employ a council member in a position where the council member is likely to receive a direct financial or professional benefit as a result of the contract with the city, or entities in which a council member has a financial interest, unless the entity and council member provide clear evidence of nonparticipation in any such contract or the management thereof. So what I'm trying to put forth here is, if the city does, if somebody on the council happens to work for some company, and that company has a contract with the city, and it's clear that the person who works for that company doesn't have anything to do with that contract, or participates in that contract in any way, that would be okay. This is kind of like a refusal on the other side. I see Councilmember Snipper shaking his head. I don't know if it's because he clearly doesn't agree or he doesn't understand my own ping pongingness here. But what I'm trying to get to is a situation where one of us works for a company that has a contract of any size with the city. But, and I would not like to see that situation result in the council member either resigning from the council, quitting his job, or somehow forcing, even though he may not be able to, force that company to let go of that contract. And that's the essence of my discomfort with this section. We're a small town. I was in that position, although I quit the company that I worked for before I came onto the council. So that's what happened in my case. But it was a contract that was very small, that I had no managerial or participation in, didn't benefit me. And I kind of stretched that out saying, well, you know, how small is small? And who's going to measure the amount of financial interest? So that's where I'm coming from, from this. And I guess I look to my other council members, maybe I've explained this poorly, but I'm trying to be clear in saying that I think it's worthwhile considering allowing one of us to work for some company that has a contract with the city, if we recuse ourselves, if we don't involve ourselves in any aspect of the management of that contract on the company's side. Have I been clear?
Can I just ask one clarifying question of what you said, Ken? When you say not participating, does that mean you also don't participate in the revenue or profit derived from that contract?
Well, that's a good question. And the answer has to be, well, what's the criteria? In other words, if you take it all the way to the end, the food co-op, if you're a member of the food co-op and the co-op has a contract with the city, and you get a rebate at the end or a patronage refund at the end of the year, you're an owner of the co-op, you've gotten a financial benefit, there's been a contract with the city, you're a member of the council, you have to quit. You have to give up your membership in the co-op, or quit the council, or get the co-op to cancel that contract.
Just to clarify, I don't think that being a member of a co-op gives you a legal ownership interest as far as the total disconcern.
Well, what if it's a worker co-op?
Like Sligo Computer Services?
Then it would depend on your percentage.
And is the percentage dictated in here, 3% somewhere? Do I have that right?
I see the more than 3% of ownership for the income you derive from your ownership interest.
The income you derive being an amount?
Annual income.
A thousand dollars?
One thousand dollars. And all those figures come from the state code.
Come from the state code?
Yes.
Well, at the state level, it might be appropriate. 3% is a very small figure. In order to be a member of a worker co-op in this town, if there were 100% divided by 3, you'd have to work for a worker co-op where everyone had equal ownership of at least 33 people. Right? So that means that if you work for a worker-owned company in Tacoma Park, there has to be more than 33 owners in order for you to be a council member.
Only if it had a contract.
If, yeah, if that company had a contract. And I think that's, I don't think that's right.
Okay. And I'm not saying I disagree with you, but it may be helpful for me to explain where this provision came from and why it was adopted. It was...
Ken, before you go on, I'm already so confused, I'd like to ask my question before I even lose that. That sentence says, however, in no event shall the city contract with entities that employ a council member. Okay, so it says employ, it doesn't just say in a co-op, but it could be an employee, standard employee. In a position where the council member is likely to receive a direct financial or professional benefit. Now, I understand the financial is that the employee's paid to do the tasks that's related to that contract. But is it only if it's related to that contract? And you don't have to answer me directly since I'm interrupting here. But the other question I have is, it says, or professional benefit, and I don't see in the definitions where professional benefits are described.
Right. And the thinking behind that language was to exclude, for example, somebody who works for the federal government. And if the city in theory had some contract with the federal government, it's not like the employee would get a bonus or a promotion because of this contract, the government's contract with the city. Or Microsoft, for example. It's not like getting a contract to supply the city with computers is going to make somebody move up the ranks of a huge company. But it's only when it seems, for example, so Bruce, rather than being, owning his company was an employee in a modestly sized contractor business. If he could help the company get and keep the city contract, that would probably be, you know, he'd probably be rewarded for that professionally and financially in a small company. So that's what the code was trying to...
I tell you, that helps me understand it better. I'm not sure that the wording here makes that clear. I think we need to be clear. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Sure. The, this paragraph C1 on page three, that had been kind of the only provision. And I think C1A would have prevented council members from having an interest in a company that has a contract with the city, because the council signed off on these contracts. They have all accomplishing authority in the city. The Ethics Commission, recognizing that our code wasn't set up to deal with the issue of council members very well, added section 2D at the bottom of page three, which said, you know, if you're going to have an occasional conflict, which council members always will, you're not barred from being employed or having this financial interest, and also working for the council, as long as you recuse yourself when these conflicts come up. But then they said, however, we still don't think council members should own businesses or have these high positions as employees where they're going to get a benefit as a result of the city business and serve on the council, because, or they shouldn't serve on the council and have contracts with the city, because, you know, businesses aren't likely to get kind of an objective review of their performance as a contractor if the city manager and the department heads and the rest of the council knows that one of the council members owns the business. For example, if the Sligo Computer Associates wasn't performing on their contract, they were behind schedule, they were overbilling, that maybe Barb would be hesitant to say to the council, we need to do something about this, we need to look into contractors, we need to take legal action, because the council member owns an interest in the business. So that's how we got where we are.
Councilmember Wright?
But if someone who owns Sligo Computing, for example, had the contract set up with the city so that it clearly stated that any revenue and profit associated with that contract would not go to that individual, and since they're a partner, I mean, they're basically a partnership or co-op, right? They say there's 10 members, and for that revenue and profit associated with that project, they could have divided that by nine and given it to the nine members and excluded the 10th member who sits on the council from that relationship. And then you wouldn't be getting a financial benefit from the contract, and you'd be able to say, I'm not, you'd be able to qualify for the first part of 2D. So you wouldn't be, that last ping pong paddle wouldn't have hit you. Is that correct?
Right. I think that is, that provides some of the benefits of what's in there now. And that's, you know, that may be a reasonable balance to strike.
I like the notion that you go back to the company and put some of the burden on them for clarifying control and benefit. I like that notion. I want to wind back one minute and just consider the kind of professionalism, I guess, of staff. If staff has a contract with a company and that company's not performing, staff ought to have the authority to renegotiate, cancel, whatever, with that contract, regardless of who's up here at the dais and so forth. So although I can see the pressure that you refer to, I'm a little concerned that staff would have to be protected and somehow, I'd rather that they act in a professional manner to handle contracts without our engagement.
Council, City Manager Matt.
No, I mean, I think, Ken can correct me if I'm wrong, I think in many of the contracts, I probably, since I'm the person who has the authority given by the council to execute a contract, I probably similarly have the authority, if there's a nonperformance clause, to cancel it. I think the issue that Ken's alluding to, though, just being very practical and it wouldn't influence, I can honestly sit here and say it wouldn't influence my judgment, but you're having members of the city council who control your employment as a city manager, who if they have a financial interest, quite simply could retaliate against the city manager for essentially interfering with their business operation. I mean, I think that's the issue that this is probably centered around, is would you have a city manager either hesitate to do that for fear of losing his or her employment, or the reverse, they do the right thing and still lose his or her employment? You know, for most people in my profession, you're not only guided by what's in the city code, but you have a professional code of ethics. But, and I think most people would do the right thing, but the simple fact of the matter is, city councils control your employment in this occupation.
Councilmember Smith.
I think the thing for me is that the role of these ethics provisions are not just for the actual conflict of interest, but the appearance of conflict of interest. And having a council member who's employed by an entity that contracts with the city is just going to look like a conflict of interest to people on the outside. It's hard to see how that wouldn't be. And I don't agree with the idea of making the contracting entity figure out some way to financially, you know, money is fungible, just because on one contract you move the money around one way. I think the appearance of the conflict of interest would still be there.
I think monitoring that arrangement would be troublesome.
Yeah. So I'm not very receptive to the problem. If there were some way that you could, you know, when you do, if you own stocks and bonds, you can put them in a blind trust, for example. And that's a way of then not knowing whether you still have, you know, a financial interest. The problem here is, when you're employed by them, there's kind of no way you can do that. That's the horns of a dilemma. So I, on the issue of being employed by the entity, I'd be very uncomfortable with that. I know as a federal government employee, I went through a lot of the ethics rules with the federal ethics folks about if the city ever did business with the federal government and what that would entail for me. And it's, they, you know, it's pretty much, it would be a problem, a serious problem. And that's obviously a very large, Department of Health and Human Services has 60,000 employees, you know, it's pretty diverse, I mean, diffuse interest.
Councilmember Clay?
I have to say, I agree with the city manager. I wouldn't want to be the city manager who had to make decisions about a company's contract when a council member had a financial interest in it. And I think it would matter how I felt about how I made my decisions, or even how I felt about the impartiality of the council member. I just think that it creates an inappropriate situation. And so I think I support the law as it's written now. I mean, I haven't heard, essentially, I haven't heard a suggestion yet that would make an amendment that I think is acceptable. I don't know how you put a co-op business relationship into a blind trust. I don't see a way to do it. So that's all.
Any other comments on this one? It sounds to me, correct me if I'm wrong, that we've gotten to the point where maybe we want to agree that, with the sense that the city attorney first said that they thought it was kind of up to us to decide if it was some kind of a policy decision rather than changing language. It sounds to me like we've said we don't necessarily want them to draft language to try and accommodate this, that we think the way it is is pretty good. Councilmember Wright?
I would just say, I generally agree with that, although I'm very sympathetic to Councilmember Robinson's concern. And personally, I wouldn't close the door on changing it if, you know, there's smarter minds than us sitting up in the dais. So if the Ethics Commission comes up with a way to do it, is willing to discuss it, or the City Attorney, or Councilmember Robinson learns of some other way it's been dealt with, I'd be open to looking at that language. But at this point, I wouldn't necessarily direct the City Attorney to change it, because I don't think we've come up with a, forget the language, I don't think we've come up with the solution. So if we can come up with a solution, then we could ask them to draft language. That would be my perspective.
Anybody else on that point? Okay, then I guess we're back to the changes that you made on the red line version that we have in front of us.
Okay. The proposal that I've given to you is that the Ethics Commission hasn't weighed in on the details, but the purpose is to provide a starting point for your discussion. The Ethics Commission has agreed with the principles of the proposal. The goal is to enable council members to represent their constituents in important matters when they have possible ethical conflicts that no reasonable person would think would influence them in their decision-making process. The proposal allows for council members, when they face kind of a gray area, to publicly disclose their conflict, disclaim it, say that they're able to vote on the matter. disclose their conflict, disclaim it, say that they're able to vote on the matter independently. And, and then the Ethics Commission would have the opportunity to, to weigh in on the disclaimer, to say whether they believe that it's appropriate under the ethics code. One thing that the Ethics Commission suggested, which didn't make it into this proposal, is allowing at least two weeks between the disclosure to, until the, the action by the council, to give the Ethics Commission the opportunity to actually give an advisory opinion on the issue.
And why didn't you include a notice period like that?
Pardon me?
And I was, I observed that you did not have that kind of notice period in there. What's the thinking?
The thinking was, I was rushing to get it done and did not, did not leave that provision in there. I think it's, it's, you know, reasonable, it makes, makes a lot of sense. And the provision also suggests an exception for emergencies, and I think we already have in our code a provision regarding emergency regulations and emergency legislation, so I think it would be easy to define in the practical definition of emergency. One specific thing that the proposal does is it allows council members to vote in, to vote on the budget, participate in the budget discussion, even if they have a conflict that with one line item that would, under the current code, require refusal. And that does come from the state code, so I'm sure there would be no problem with that change.
So that, so that would just mean you recuse yourself from the discussion on that particular area, but you can go ahead and vote on the budget?
Right. That's the, that's the brief summary of it.
Questions on that, Councilmember Wright?
So in that section D1, the, am I to understand that, and I'm not picking on Terry in any way, I'm just using an example of something in the past where he, I think rightfully recused himself, but the reading of that section, in Terry's case, he owned a single property in Tacoma Park, you know, a one-unit house, and when we were, when I was on the council at the time, there was a discussion about rent control, he recused himself until it was clear that that was off the table. But this sort of suggests that he could have actually voted and engaged in that because it applied to everyone who was a property owner. Is that, is that the correct reading of that?
I'm not sure how that would apply in specific rent control issues. In that example, where we were talking about exempting owners of one single-family home, I think you could make an argument either way as to whether that's going to have a direct impact on a relatively small class, or if that's anything that rent control applies to all landlords. I mean, I think there's, there's specific questions relating to rent control that I'm not sure we can, we can really clearly address in the code, and that would be a job for the Ethics Commission. The example I gave in my summary would be a, for example, a change if, if a council member is a rental property owner, and there is a change in the city's lease requirements, would do things like require the offering of a one-year lease and require certain notices of some general landlord kind of regulation. I think you could easily say it doesn't have a direct financial impact on someone and applies to all residential landlords. So that, those things clearly, Terry is a rental property owner, could vote on. Specific questions about rent control, I'm not sure I can, can say exactly how, how those would work out.
Well, maybe that means that Section 1 might have a clause on that that says all of this applies unless you have a direct and clear financial benefit.
Well, I think, I think that comes, comes into play in, in the light of paragraph D2 and D3.
Did I sense a ping pong paddle coming from this direction?
Well, I thought that, to be honest, I, I thought that, that in the example of Terry's recusing himself was whether or not his unit, his rental unit would or wouldn't be included under rent control, and, you know, it's regularly argued that rent control has a substantial impact on the value of the property and the amount of income you get, so I thought Terry was appropriately recusing himself. And then when it was clear that was not going to be discussed, then it seemed he did not have a financial interest, because his, his unit wasn't part of the discussion. In the case-
Right, and that's, in that specific example, I would say probably this, this would, this paragraph D1 would not allow Terry to participate. But, but I don't know for other, see that exactly.
But there is the, the general ethical provision that if you have, if you're going to be affected financially, you need to recuse yourself. So that would, that's earlier in the whole ethics ordinance, there's that part, I don't remember which section it, it's in.
Well, the, the purpose of this chapter is to recognize, or this, this paragraph is to recognize that there are some things that the council deals with that are going to have an effect on them in the same manner that it's going to affect either a large class of the population or the whole population. For example, property taxes, like if you gave a technical reading to the existing ordinance, you all wouldn't be able to vote on property taxes if you own a property in the city.
Councilmember Simmons.
Thank you. Hey, I can give you another rent control, rent stabilization example. You know, there's also the argument among many people in the community that rent stabilization program in Tacoma Park affects everyone's property taxes, and, and so this would, without this, theoretically, we wouldn't be able to talk about rent control at all, because we're all property taxpayers in Tacoma Park. I guess that's the primary purpose. I was trying to understand, you know, why are we talking about this? And it's, and it's really because of things like that, that technically, the way the ordinance is written now, or the way this is written now, we shouldn't be voting on some of these things or discussing some of these things, and this is just to get around those technicalities. Is that correct? It's not to open the curtain so we can start making windfall benefits to ourselves from our decisions. Well, okay. I would just like to-
Helps to keep taxes low, since we all pay taxes.
That's well, we all try to do that anyways, varying degrees of success. But Emily, I, I just wrap up for myself this evening, and thank you for the work you put into the Ethics Commission, and, and without belittling, belittling any other volunteer work in the city, I would just say that I think this is one of the most important volunteer efforts in the, that the city has, calls on people to do. I really appreciate your stepping forward to do this and working with the other people and, and reinvigorating the commission, because I think we've not, not depended, or turned to the commission as often as we should have, and there's other work that I think I would like to see the commission take on at some point when you are actually moving along in a healthy state again, and I'm talking about the commission, not you personally.
I think we're, we're there now. We've got four commissioners, I think we have two more individuals who've expressed interest, so I think we're there. I think we're ready to take on whatever the-
Are there any, any things that this council can do to help you to keep things moving forward?
No, just make sure that we have commissioners, you know, that's, that's the main thing. So we've had a lot of vacancies that have lasted for a long time, so it's good to keep the commission staff.
Final comments?
I just want to ask one real quick question on, so I understand, because this originally happened, this Section D was to my particular case, so I just wanted to clarify, if you're in a situation where there is one line item in the budget, and you don't talk about it and you don't vote on it when it's the line item, but you vote on the whole budget, you don't have to recuse yourself for filing anything with the Ethics Commission specifically for that? Or is Section 2 saying that in that situation, you have to ask for the okay?
Yeah, I'm not sure what, what kind of statement, if any, would have to be filed. I'd have to go look at it again with that question in mind.
So you'll come back with that?
I don't know, I, I, I don't really have an opinion on the issue that this the council, I mean, do you feel strongly?
I don't think you should have, if it's in that clear boundaries, I don't think you should have to file something with the Ethics Commission beforehand, but that's my opinion, my council colleagues might disagree.
I, I think the idea is you file this if you wish to participate. If you're going to recruit, recuse yourself, then you don't have to.
But the example that was given of, you know, discussing property taxes, I can't imagine that we're each going to file a letter with the Ethics Commission before every time we talk about something that affects property taxes.
Right, but the, clearly, the, these general issues in paragraph D1, there is no, no requirement to file a disclosure statement.
Clear to you, I'm still working on it.
We can just outfit you with a pad, and every time you need to, you break that little thing and hand it out. Councilmember Simmons.
And a clarifying question, the, most of this language is modeled after the state, the stuff on page four?
No, it's, and the, the principles come from the state codes. It's, the, the language that the state code uses is extremely confusing and references back and forth throughout the statute.
Okay, is there anything else that we think they need to know before they look at this and we get input from the Ethics Commission, and it comes back in form for us to consider? Thank you both. And we'll now get to the New Hampshire Avenue Corridor Plan discussion, and you're going to lower the screen and we're going to come down there?
Yes.
And we're going to turn down the lights, and then we're going to close our eyes? Yes. Have a stage. Close sleep.
Which, which one are you talking about?
Battery, a battery pack.
Hello?
If we buy a company that has a, for which the one of our council members has a financial-
You have to have a lot of interest, have an interest, okay. Good evening, since it's late, I'll get started. This, this is just, I'm going to present a brief overview of the New Hampshire Avenue Concept Plan. I believe it's been presented several times, and at least once in debt to the council before, so just to refresh your memories, you should also all have a copy of the concept plan, the draft concept plan, and this is available online. And I'll point out there are definitely typos in it, and so what we're presenting to you tonight is something that we expect to make minor modifications to in terms of cleaning up some of the typos. There's also a resolution that's, that's open for discussion. So essentially, we're all aware that there are issues on New Hampshire Avenue, that's why we're discussing this, and why there has been a lot of community and agency and city time spent on the New Hampshire Avenue Concept Plan. The, this concept plan covers the second largest and the third largest commercial district in the city, and when you go visit these commercial areas, you wouldn't know that they're that important within the context of the city. And New Hampshire Avenue itself is actually a speedway, there's not necessarily heavy traffic most of the time, but certainly very fast traffic, there are pedestrian fatalities, and businesses over time, while there are many strong businesses, and we did have recently a wonderful new redevelopment at the, in the Maryland Gateway. Overall, there has been a lack of investment in the properties along the New Hampshire Avenue corridor. And in addition, there are two very important environmental resources along the corridor, Sligo Creek Parkway and, I'm sorry, Sligo Creek, the creek, and Tacoma Branch, which is also a tributary of Sligo Creek. And probably most, one of the most striking things about the avenue is that it doesn't appear to be part of our community. People can't walk to it, people don't want to spend much time on it, there's nothing very inviting about it right now. So the New Hampshire Avenue Concept Plan lays out a framework to address that. There are three main components, transportation, mixed-use redevelopment, and addressing issues related to the environment. The major component of the, related to transportation is the Multilane Boulevard, and some parts of that already exist along the avenue. However, they don't really facilitate people who are on foot or on bicycle or taking transit, and those are things that the Multilane Boulevard balances out with the need for commuter traffic as it is a state highway facility. One of the ways that the Multilane Boulevard would be able to handle the volume of traffic is by adding streets, so expanding the capacity of intersections, especially at Ethan, Ethan Allen and East West Highway, to handle the number of people who are turning or going straight at those intersections by adding additional streets. Mixed-use redevelopment is a large component of this, much of the commercial area is underutilized, there are very small buildings with lots of parking area, so this is a big opportunity for the city to become more fiscally and economically sustainable by diversifying the tax base and adding new, new types of development to the tax base, as well as improving the customer base in the area so that there's more diversity of retail, and creating better public spaces by creating a type of development that will support those public spaces and activity in those public spaces. This shows an overview of the intersection of New Hampshire Avenue and Ethan Allen, it's on the left, and then East West on the right. And so this basically is, is what most of the corridor looks like in the commercial areas, and this is our second-
I guess what I was looking for is that in the recommendations and implementations, that there would be reference back to those sections, just as you verbally outlined, so that, you know, C-section X, C-section Y, as a way of pointing to the details. Because the parts in the back are, as you just indicated, extremely general. It's hard to tie them together.
We can do that.
Okay. Councilmember Clay?
Thank you for bringing this back to us again so we could have an opportunity to pass a resolution and have it adopted. I think it's terrific, of course. This is one of the things that I talked about when I was campaigning for office the first time, and, you know, I was thinking about increasing tax revenues and creating a real strong connection between the New Hampshire Avenue and sort of the underutilization and have a better flow between the spaces. This plan is so much more than that, and I think it's just terrific. You know, I listened to talking about the stormwater issues and addressing the issues about people at the crosswalks, and there's the whole international market area. It's really forward-looking and much more than I was ever thinking about, you know, being a planner. It's kind of funny to me, but I think it's terrific. I really hope that we're able to get good buy-in from the state on the plan for the roadway. It's one of my favorite parts about it. And it's one of the ways that I think this plan helps really develop a vision for how we're going to grow together and address even some of the issues that we confront today. It's one of the great things about the way that the streets are laid out is it does help provide a buffer between the street and the neighborhood, and that helps with the cut-through issues, puts more people out onto the street, and helps create safer communities. So I really appreciate it, and I appreciate everything that both of you have done and the team that you put together and the city managers work on this, and particularly the way that you guys have involved the community. A lot of people from Ward 2 talked to me about this plan and, you know, how colorful it is, and it's something that they're really interested in, and they have a lot of questions about it. And sometimes their questions are things, you know, "Could we really do that?" I'm like, "Yeah, actually, we could. We could really just start moving in that direction and make it happen." But you have to have something on paper. And I also think one of the critical things about this, and I was talking to one of the other council members about it earlier tonight, is that because it's been through the process of being reviewed by the community, people can engage in a development activity with some confidence that the community has buy-in and that the council has buy-in. And for that reason, I think it is very important for us to adopt the resolution so that it creates some sense that, you know, it's okay to move forward and make plans based on that if you're a property owner or you're somebody who's interested in coming and working with the city. We've said, "Hey, this is where we want to go," and can invite people to come onboard with us, so. Thank you.
Frankly, a couple of weeks ago, we were at the Urban Land Institute in the marketplace, and this is part of the booth that we had. And I will admit to being surprised and tickled at the number of people that came by and talked to us about the plan, and were-- it was encouraging. They were very positive about the fact that the community had taken this step and that the community had gotten involved in the development of this vision for the area. And nobody said, "Can't do it, nobody will do it." They were all asked lots of questions about it, were very supportive of the land use options that were being proposed, very supportive of the boulevard concept and the sensitivity to the environment. So-- and they were also-- it was like, "Oh, you guys have already talked about mixed use, you've already talked about density." I think it was-- it was good to know that by having some of this conversation prior to anyone undertaking a project, that it sort of doesn't make it necessarily any easier, but it does give people a sense of what it is that people have spoken about before they even start thinking about it.
So we might actually, in a different financial environment, attract some developers?
We-- yes. And it might not be as bad as we've been working on the new section. But, yeah. There are people that are interested in this area for a variety of reasons.
Councilmember Ray?
I also think the plan is quite amazing in many aspects, including we're not necessarily always known as a community that gets behind development in a kind of a-- in a way where we have common community agreements. So I think that's great. A couple of things. One is I think we're actually underselling a whole environmental aspect to it. So I heard you guys talk about stormwater management and that part of it. I think we need to sort of up the ante around the-- that communities need to be designed like this, and neighborhoods need to be designed like this, to change the way we go about our life, which has drastic environmental impacts of less getting in the car, less driving, more walking. You know, even the density of housing units are typically more efficient than a single-family home. And then on top of that, I think-- I don't-- I reread the plan today, and maybe I missed it, but I didn't think there was anything in there about encouraging buildings that are LEED certified, either at a gold or platinum, you know, some very high level of LEED certification. I think that actually might help us get money and resources because we could potentially pitch this whole area as, "This is the future. We need money to sort of-- set up an example or sample of what it's like to develop a community with new environmental paradigm out there." So I think that's-- the one concern I have, I guess, about adopting a resolution that's as specific as the one that was written here is I agree 100% with all the high-level concepts of what the plan is trying to accomplish and many, many of the details. I guess my concern there is some of the things Ruben pointed out, for example, around bus or bike usage. I know you guys have a solution in there for bus usage and bike usage, but I'm not sure that that's the one that we are necessarily should pursue 100%. So, you know, ideas-- like Mark Elrich came and talked to us, you know, just a few weeks ago about this whole idea of these dedicated bus lines. And I think New Hampshire Avenue is actually one of the corridors he's proposing. I don't know if it goes this far down. It does. Sorry.
I'm not sure if that's the one that he's proposing, but I do know that we-- I actually talked to Lamada today, and they're going to be starting a study for the K6, which is the New Hampshire Avenue line, in January. In other areas, that study heads out to its best service, and it possibly dedicated lanes, I'm not sure.
Right. So that sort of thing, or, you know, maybe we could just bury the substation. Maybe the whole substation could go underground. Maybe you say like, "Oh, that's crazy, we can't..." But I think this whole idea of the concept plan is sort of that nothing's off the table. So that's my only concern a little bit is, could we write the resolution in such a way that still give you guys-- I understand you want direction and be able to make it clear to people that we have a way we're moving forward and a selling point, but just a little concerned that it's clear that this is conceptual, that many of the details could adjust based on maybe finding practices that are better or, you know, clearly from the letter we got from the state already, they're not terribly interested. First take on creating the boulevard scenario that we want. So maybe we need to--
That was from Park and Plan.
Oh, was it from Park and Plan? I thought we got something from State Transportation also.
That was from the last design go-around, which was in 2004.
Okay.
We've spoken--
2004, they'll be revised.
Great, great. But you get-- I think you get the gist of what I'm saying. But that's not-- I don't want to be the-- those end comments shouldn't be the wet blanket. I think the plan is bad.
You're right. It is a concept plan. These are overriding goals. These are recommendations of how to get there. Things are going to change. There may be better ways of doing what we're hoping to accomplish that will come up in the next five years. And it's not to put the kibosh on that, it's just to open up the door. This is what our expectations are.
Councilmember Ramon.
Thanks.
Vin Siemens, then Barry.
Thanks you two for pulling this together so effectively and presenting it, and I'm really thrilled to hear that hit.
What I was looking for is that in the recommendations and implementations that there would be reference back to those sections, just as you verbally outlined, so that, you know, see section X, see section Y, as a way of pointing to the details, because the parts in the back are, as you just indicated, extremely general. It's hard to tie them together.
We can do that.
Okay. Councilmember Clay?
Thank you for bringing this back to us again, so we could have an opportunity to pass a resolution and adopt it. So, I think it's terrific, of course. This is one of the things that I talked about when I was campaigning for office the first time, and, you know, I was, I was thinking about increasing tax revenues and creating a real strong connection between the New Hampshire Avenue and sort of the underutilization, and have a better flow between the spaces. This plan is so much more than that, and I think it's just terrific. You know, I listened to talking about the stormwater issues and addressing the issues about people at the, at the crosswalks, and there, there's the whole international market area. It's really forward-looking, and, and much more than I was, than I was ever, ever thinking about, you know, being a planner. It's kind of funny to me, but I think it's terrific. I, I really hope that we're able to get good buy-in from the state on the plan for the roadway. That's one of my favorite parts about it, and it's one of the ways that I think this plan helps really develop a vision for how we're going to grow together and address even some of the issues that we confront today. It's one of the great things about the way that the streets are laid out, is it does help provide a buffer between the street and the neighborhood, and that helps with the cut-through issues, puts more people out onto the street, and helps create safer communities. So, I really appreciate it, and I appreciate everything that both of you have done, and the team that, that you put together, and the city managers work on this, and particularly the way that you guys have involved the community. A lot of people from Ward Two talk to me about this plan, and, you know, how colorful it is, and it's something that they're really interested in, and they have a lot of questions about it, and sometimes their questions are things, you know, "Could we really do that?" I'm like, "Yeah, actually, we could. We could really just start moving in that direction and make it happen." But you have to have something on paper. And I, I also think one of the critical things about this, and I was talking to one of the other council members about it earlier tonight, is that because it's been through the, the process of being reviewed by the community, people can engage in a development activity with some confidence that the community has buy-in and that the council has buy-in. And for that reason, I think it is very important for us to adopt the resolution, so that, so that it creates some sense that, you know, it's okay to move forward and make plans based on that if you're, if you're a property owner, or you're somebody who's interested in coming and working with the city, we've said, "Hey, this is where we want to go," and can invite people to come onboard with us, so, thank you.
Frankly, a couple of weeks ago, we were at the Urban Land Institute in the marketplace, and this is part of the booth that we had. And I will admit to being surprised and tickled at the number of people that came by and talked to us about the plan, and were, it was, it was encouraging. They were very positive about, positive about the fact that the community had taken this step, and that the community had gotten involved in development and this vision for the area. And nobody said, "Can't do it, nobody will do it." They were all asked lots of questions about it, were very supportive of the land use options that were being proposed, very supportive of the Boulevard concept, and the sensitivity to the environment. So, and they were also, it was like, "Oh, you guys have already talked about mixed-use, you've already talked about density." I think it was, it was good to know that by having some of this conversation prior to anyone undertaking a project, that it sort of doesn't make it any, necessarily any easier, but it does give people a sense of what it is that people have spoken about before they even start thinking about it.
So, we might actually, in a different financial environment, attract some developers?
We, yes, and it might not be as bad as we've been working on the subject, but yeah. There are people that are interested in this area for a variety of reasons.
Councilmember Wright?
I also think the plan is, is quite amazing in many aspects, including, we're not necessarily always known as a community that, that gets behind development in a kind of a, in a, in a way where we have common community agreements, so I think that's great. Couple, a couple of things. One is, I think we're actually underselling a whole environmental aspect to it, so I heard you guys talk about stormwater management and that part of it. I think we need to sort of up to ante around the, the, that communities need to be designed like this, and neighborhoods need to be designed like this, to change the way we go about our life, which has drastic environmental impacts, so less getting in the car, less, you know, less driving, more walking, you know, density, even the density of housing units are typically more efficient than a single-family home. And then, on top of that, I think, I don't, I reread the plan today, and maybe I missed it, but I didn't think there was anything in there about encouraging buildings that are LEED certified, either at a gold or platinum, you know, some very high level of LEED certification. I think that actually might help us get money and resources, because we could potentially pitch this whole area as, "This is the future. We need money to sort of, uh, get, set up, set up, set up an example or sample of what it's like to develop a community with new environmental paradigm out there." So, I think that's, um, the one concern I have, I guess, about adopting a resolution that's as specific as the one that was written here is, I agree 100% with all the high-level concepts of what the plan is trying to accomplish, and many, many of the details. I guess my concern there is some of the things Ruben pointed out, for example, around bus or bike usage. I know you guys have a solution in there for bus usage and bike usage, but I'm not sure that that's the one that we are necessarily should pursue 100%. So, you know, ideas, like Mark Elrich came and talked to us, you know, just a few weeks ago about this whole idea of these dedicated bus lines, and I think New Hampshire Avenue is actually one of the corridors he's proposing. I don't know if it goes this far down. It, it does. Sorry.
I, I'm not sure if that's the one that he's proposing, but I do know that we, I actually talked to Almada today, and they're going to be starting a study for the K6, which is the New Hampshire Avenue line, in January. In other areas, that study has led to its best service, and it possibly dedicated lanes, I'm not sure.
Right. So, that sort of thing, or, you know, maybe we could just bury the substation. Maybe the whole substation could go underground. And maybe you say like, "Oh, that's crazy, we can't," but I think this whole idea of the concept plan is sort of that nothing's off the table. So, that's my only concern a little bit, is could we write the resolution in such a way that still give you guys, I understand you want direction, and be able to make it clear to people that we have a, a way we're moving forward and a selling point, but just a little concerned that it's clear that this is conceptual, that many of the details could, could adjust, based on maybe finding practices that are better, or, or, you know, clearly from the letter we got from the state already, they're not terribly interested. First take on creating the Boulevard scenario that we want, so maybe we need to...
That was from Park and Plain.
Oh, was it from Park and Plain? I thought we got something from State Transportation also.
That, that was from the last design go-around, which was in 2004.
Okay.
We've spoken to them.
They'll be, they'll be revisited.
Great, great. But you, you get the, I think you get the gist of what I'm saying. But that's not, I don't want to be the, those end comments shouldn't be the wet blanket. I think the plan is bad.
No, you're right. It is, it is a concept plan. These are overriding goals, these are recommendations of how to get there. Things are going to change. There may be better ways of doing what we're hoping to accomplish that will come up in the next five years. And it's not to put the kibosh on that, it's just to open up the door. This is what our expectations are.
Councilmember Ramon.
Thanks.
Vince Siemens, then Barry.
Thanks you two for pulling this together so effectively and presenting it, and I'm really thrilled to hear that. It is a beacon for others in the area to look at and appreciate, and, um, my experience over there has been difficult, and, and yet, it's been progress, and, uh, there are a lot of folks along New Hampshire Avenue who, well, they, they represent two of the fears that I've heard about, about the avenue. One is that all of the poor people we pushed out, that's one fear, and the other is that developers will be priced out, in a sense, because there'll be an anticipatory gold rush toward the property, and in fact, I saw that in the, in the reassessment of the property value for, for where I am. It felt like the assessors were having a gold rush. But, um, maybe, so maybe the tough times we're in for, for the next five years, or two years, or I hope it's not too long, will put a damper on, on the gold rush aspect. But at the same time, this document will be a beacon that we can all work to and keep, keep enough diversity in the area so that it doesn't become Maza Gallery, or, and, and keep enough environmental consciousness so that it doesn't go the way of 355 and Rockville Pike, and, you know, there's a lot of lessons that can be learned from other places in the area, too, so I commend you for all the work you're doing, and, um, thanks a lot. And I, and as, looking at the whereas parts, what you're proposing that we adopt, I'm, I'm comfortable with them. The strategies, priorities, and phasing will be used to develop, review, and evaluate, you know, that's not, I don't find that overly restrictive on, I was, I had that same fear as Councilmember Wright for, for a while, but I, in reading the whereas, is I don't, I'm not, the fear is lessened, so thank you for that work as well.
Councilmember Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks to both of you and our planning department. I think you, again, say the same thing I said last time tonight, I think you did an excellent job with this concept, and, um, I, some of my things I wanted to say, I think Councilmember Wright expressed adequately, and that is that, to remind not just you and us that this is a concept plan, but I think it's important for the community to understand that it's a concept, and it isn't, certainly isn't the last time the community is going to have a chance to speak up and, and talk about the many features and details that go into this, actually, becoming reality. There will be many more opportunities for the public to voice their opinions and to help to shape what we actually do out in the community. But, again, I, I think it's, it's great to see this move forward. I have one question, and it's only to satisfy, satisfy my curiosity. You said this is the second-largest commercial area in the city, and I learned that you said what that's based on, land size, in terms of what?
Land area.
Land area. Thank you.
Councilmember Barry.
Thank you. Yeah, it's a very strong plan, and it's just wonderful to see, and maybe it wasn't, maybe it was intentional, but the before and after visuals that you used, the photographs seem to be washed out, giving it an even more arid and desolate look than it has in reality, though there's plenty of iridity and desolation there, to be sure. One suggestion would be to consider putting some of these color drawings in the newsletter, and, you know, maybe in a series of articles about the plan itself, and the process for it, and also important what's next, but I think if people, as we have seen tonight, can see the before and after, it really helps people imagine and visualize what could be, instead of the sort of oppressive environment that we've all known for, you know, quite some time now. The, the other good part is all the trees and greenery. There's such an absence of that now, that you really feel, especially there at Eastern Avenue, and then further down East-West Highway, it's, there's just no trees at all, and it's, it's really just a concrete wasteland. The other, but the, the question I had is, even though it's encouraging that some developers have already expressed an interest in it despite the times, let's just say we're a period of time away from serious investment, I think that's a reasonable assumption, and yet, there have been some, you know, minor but not insignificant improvements, which the, your department has been in part responsible for, and I'm thinking of some of the signage improvements in the strip malls that we've, in the Tacoma Park area along that trek, and then, of course, the trees that have been planted with the help of Prince George's County in front of the god-awful Pepco substation there. And what else? The sidewalks, some new sidewalks have been created there, and then the compliance with the Disabilities Act, allowing, you know, better access to the sidewalks, and, and some new bus stops have been added, and, and improved to the point where you can actually board the bus without serious harm to yourself, and that's been great, especially for the population there that relies on public transportation. So, my question is, what incremental improvements can continue to be made, and do we have a plan for such increments? And what might some of these additional or future increments look like while waiting for the major money to flow into the area?
We have a lot of these. On my sleeve.
Um, yeah. We have multiple projects actually underway that are directed towards New Hampshire Avenue. Some of them part of larger projects, and some of them very specific to the avenue. A specific one that I just received pictures from was, is the community gardening project, and so that's a very small pot of money that is used to assist communities, or, or institutions, or even individuals who would like to do beautification work, either a community garden or a community greening type of project on public or private land that's visible from New Hampshire Avenue. And so, Hillwood Manor is a community, and I believe throwing your word, and they submitted an application and received a grant award, and, and that's for planting trees and planting a gateway garden, but as part of their project, they also had a cleanup day, and so they worked to take invasives out, out from the area that they were planting and planting. And so, I got some very nice pictures from it. So, a lot of our projects are geared towards forming partnerships, either with communities, people in the community, or in the case of our beautification grants for businesses, partnerships with businesses so that they'll invest in their signage, their landscaping, outdoor seating. We actually have a wide program, and we have a lot of money that the state of Maryland has generously given us, and we're looking for partners, so if you know of any businesses that might be interested, we're doing a lot of outreach, too. We also have some funding from community legacy, and that will be, go into several areas, but today, one of the reasons that I did talk to Almada today is because we were talking to Ride On and Almada, various departments from both agencies about bus stops and bus stop improvements, and how can we make, make New Hampshire Avenue look like something is happening while we also know that we do want major infrastructure changes. So, streetscape-type furniture, street furniture is one way that we can make changes, and that one thing that we have funding for, so that people can see the changes running by, but also enhances the experience with people who live in the neighborhood, use transit, or maybe walking by because it's more attractive, because there's attractive trashcans, attractive benches, and other, other types of amenities. One of the other things that we're doing that's known, that you won't see when you're driving down the street, though, is many, excuse me, many of you may have seen the new RAV logo that was developed. We're going to be unveiling a, a new website in the next month, month and a half, that's focused on developing the community as far as the business and the shopping opportunities that are available along New Hampshire Avenue. To encourage people to go up there, the more, more people have exposure to the area, the more intriguing it becomes, the more they recognize what the possibilities are as far as retail goods. And it's also intended, there's also an aspect of it that will appeal to folks that are currently doing business on the area, to give them information about some of the incentive programs that are available through us or through the state, as well as developers that are looking for expansion opportunities, land values, information about grants, demographic information, things like that. So, it's a little bit of everything.
And just one more question. I'm intrigued by how one goes about marketing to the development community. Are there lists of developers? Can you just cold-call them, or do you have to have elaborate prospectus for them? You've done some tours, I know, a bus tour before, but, I mean, how, what's the psychology of, and the practicality of actually reaching out to them in a sustained, strategic way, and pitching this in a way they're, they're likely to maybe react faster than they would otherwise?
Our, our strategy with developers is twofold, because we also have to work with property owners. As, as has been mentioned, there is a fear that property prices will rise considerably with no development taking place, and so we are working with property owners so that they recognize the value of their property, and the value of the area, and the value of investment in the area. So, part of our job is to have very good information about properties, which ones might sell, which ones might want, be interested in partnering, which ones might be interested in developing themselves, and to be able to offer property owners the opportunity to help present the area information to the development community. So, and that also safely helps a lot of legwork, because they know that they can come to the city and find recent, up-to-date, detailed information about properties. So, we work both to maintain relationships with property owners and build relationships with property owners, and also to, we do, we do have lists of developers. There are lists out there, so different, you know, associations and so forth. We look for associations related to mixed-use development, or people that give awards for mixed-use developers. So, you can, you can find a lot of that information now, and it's actually incredibly readily available, but then we still have to do a lot of legwork to find the right person to talk to, and, and then to actually get them to come on a tour, talk to us, and so forth. And, and actually, that's, the nice thing about the D.C. region is that there has been a lot of interest in this recently, so it's made it a lot easier. Because the market is so competitive, developers are looking for new opportunities, and, and they do go to places like the ULI Urban Marketplace Conference, and they tell us we've talked to, and they tell us, and it's...
Have we contacted EYA by any chance?
Actually, they were...
Our good friend?
They, they did have a booth at, at the, at the Urban Marketplace Conference, and I spoke to their marketing director, and, and she gave me names of people that do, that do do development, that do development in our area, as opposed to, she's just, she was more selling the company as opposed to the person who would look at prospects. And they were, the project that they were showing at Urban Marketplace was the development in Hyattsville, which if you haven't been there, and I realized that they have a lot of different properties throughout the region, but they are known for a high level of design detail, which I think is something that does fit in with some of the things that were expressed at many of the meetings.
I have, Doug, I did mention in one conversation on the phone to Bob that perhaps he'd like to spend his time, money, and effort on this site as opposed to the metro site, and he said he was totally willing to look at the concept plan and what ideas we had, and, and give a developer perspective on it, on it, so I think we should, I'd be happy to help facilitate and follow up on that.
The, the other group that Alana didn't mention, are the business owners themselves. They may not necessarily own their own space, but they have, over time, built up equity and are interested in doing something together as a cooperative or a consortium, so there are a variety of different ways of approaching it. Frankly, Alana and the guys, many people that are working on this project, it's, a lot of it's just jogging, you know, making calls, finding a project that you kind of think looks cool, and you want to have it here, and getting them a treat so that they, that they will come and stop by any of this and go and...
Well, it sounds like you're really on top of it.
We also look for investors, yes.
And we met with a number of them, I mean, we were just...
Good. Sounds like that was, uh, time well spent. Councilmember Simmons, Chris, as he has a short last question.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I don't remember whether community gardens was part of the vision in the concept plan, but I know that the Manah Food Center at Rockville would be very interested in partnering with the city or anyone else that has space available for community gardens, either here in this project area or anywhere else in Montgomery County, but hopefully Tacoma Park. Maybe we have some other opportunities. And County Councilwoman Valerie Irvin, when she was here, also talked about her desire to have community gardens throughout Montgomery County.
When I was at the EYA meeting, I chatted with her about the Flex bikes and the community gardens, so, yeah, she has some very good...
Think about next spring, we want to have the garden up and running by then, so it really would be helpful to many residents of the city. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, and we'll bring this back. See you next week.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You guys got us, when you go out and talk to people about it, you have to talk about the concept plan, lobbying is going to be important here in this room.
Already happy.
I know, you do think that.
And the final item is the city manager's quarterly report and financial report.
I will be extremely brief. Included in your packet is the quarterly financial report for the period ending September 30th. There's a fairly detailed explanation of a lot of the variances. Truthfully, by the time you get to the first quarter of the fiscal year, there's not a whole lot of things that are generally going to look out of whack. It's a little too early to tell. Just a couple of things I'll just note. One is that obviously revenues from real property taxes were down compared to last year, which is not surprising, since the council had lowered the tax rate as part of the FY09 budget. The other thing that's probably not really a surprise, but certainly the fact that investment revenues are down, which I think is a direct correlation to what's happening with interest rates. We really far exceeded our projections last year for investment revenues. We were projecting that there would be a decrease from last year, and in fact, that's what we're seeing. From quarter to quarter, our receipts from use of money and property are down by about $60,000. But once again, that was a trend that we were sort of expecting to see. One thing that didn't, I didn't really comment on in the report, but I would just remind the council, is you may have noted that there was a minor decrease from last year for highway user revenues. Just as a reminder, we had received notification from the state, since the budget was adopted, that they have revised their own projections, and based on the information we have from the state, we are expecting that as the year continues to go forward, that you'll see the decrease from year to year in highway user revenues continuing to grow. In fact, we are expecting that highway user revenues will probably come in less than budget by about $35,000, based on the information we got from the state. That was after the budget was adopted, so certainly that's something we'll be watching as the fiscal year moves on. In terms of expenditures, nothing at this point that's at all unexpected. From, you know, fiscal year to fiscal year, basically, expenditures are up, which is not surprising. Fuel costs were obviously considerably higher than last year, and certainly our personnel cost overall are up. So, be happy to answer any questions, but I know it is late, and just wanted to kind of hit the highlights.
Well, Barbara, in just reviewing this, it looked like a very busy and creative and productive quarter. I particularly noted the activities of the rec department, which seemed to be, again, very high-impact and, and creative, and I was also happy to see, driving through the city over the weekend, a couple of big banners advertising the upcoming Winter Basketball League. I saw them outside the building here, and also at the corner of Sligo Creek in Philadelphia. I saw them outside the building here, and also at the corner of Sligo Creek in Philadelphia, places where a lot of people pass through, and normally, when we promote some of our more important activities in the city. So, I appreciate all that promotion effort, and I know the rec committee will appreciate very much that effort by your staff.
Great, thank you very much.
Barb, you commented about the tax rate, but although we had lowered the tax rate, the assessed value had gone up, so wouldn't we have expected to see an increase in revenues?
It's truthfully always a little hard to tell. I mean, in doing these reports, we try to dig in as much as we can. Certainly, some of it can be an impact of timing, of just when people pay their property taxes. But the finance director and our budget analyst have basically reviewed it. Their suspicion at this point is it may be more attributable to the decrease in the property tax rate, but that's something that we'll just have to kind of watch the trend. But you are correct, Councilmember Siemens, just the mere timing of the receipts can change quite a bit.
Okay. Again, I guess from this report, it's hard to tell that all the economic changes are going to impact this, but I think as we move forward as council, it's, be prudent to be frugal until we see what the impact's going to be.
I think partly the most we'll see is certainly investment revenues are going to be down. I think the state's already put us on notice about highway user revenues. But obviously, we're kind of seeing an economy that we haven't seen, probably at least in my career, thankfully, and we'll just all have to see how that plays out.
Thank you. I was just going to echo your comments, because it seemed to make logical sense to me that it would be driven by the tax rate going down, because, so if it actually is that the people are paying less taxes, or people are getting behind in their taxes, that could have real significant impacts on the city, and could be a sign that people are really struggling. So, I just, it might be nice before the next quarter to have a little bit more thorough understanding of what's going on.
Yeah, I mean, overall, just as a reminder, I mean, there's no doubt that because assessments were still up, even with the lowering of the tax rate, we are still expecting overall property tax revenue to be higher than it was, even with the reduction. We're obviously starting to enter the time period where we'll be getting the remittance from the county, which does collect property taxes for us, so certainly we can try to just watch that from month to month and see if that trend starts shaking out. You know, I previously, just by email, shared with the council some information about foreclosures. That's obviously something that the Housing Department in particular will continue to watch, and we'll share that information with you.
Okay, thank you. We're done.
Thank you. Thank you.
That's your end of line.